Good evening and welcome to the first in a series of fiscal year 22 budget hearings hosted by the Boston Public School Committee and Superintendent Brenda Casillas. We're going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm going to ask my colleagues if they could please unmute themselves and join me.
I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America.
One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Because this is a remote session, I'm going to ask Ms. Sullivan if she could please call the rule.
Mr. James. Dr. Coleman.
President.
Mr. DeRouge.
Present.
Ms. Rivera. Ms. Robinson.
Present.
Mr. Tran.
Present.
Mr. O'Neil. Ms. Oliver Davila.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Rivera and Mr. O'Neil are not with us at the moment.
Great, thank you. Dr. Rivera is teaching a class this evening. I'm sure Mr. O'Neil will hop on. So, thank you. Tonight's hearing is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and also on YouTube. For those of you joining us on Zoom or at a later date, you can find tonight's documents posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee under the February 11th link. The agenda and many of the budget documents have been translated in all of the major BPS languages. Any documents that are not translated prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Mandarin, Cantonese, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After I ask the interpreters to introduce themselves, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe which you'll find at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select the language that you prefer. And in order to access this feature, you need to have updated your version of Zoom to the latest version. And you can do that by visiting support.zoom.us. I'm going to now ask our Spanish-speaking interpreters to please introduce yourselves and also if you could translate to the Spanish-speaking audience to switch their Zoom over to the channel in Spanish.
Thank you, but I'm sure good even in everyone. My name is Juan Bernal. I am the simultaneous Spanish interpreter. I will be interpreting for those who need of interpretation simultaneously. We will be taking turns with my friend Rando, thirty-minute intervals. And I will now explain in Spanish how to access the icon of interpretation for interpretation purposes. Muy buenas noches para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy el intérprete simultáneo. Vamos a trabajar trabajando en conjunto con mi compañero de trabajo Rando en incrementos de treinta minutos para hacer la interpretación simultánea. La forma como van a accesar el icono de la interpretación tienen que buscar en la parte baja de la pantalla un círculo que parece el globo terráqueo. Van a tener dos opciones, español, inglés. Seleccionan español para poder escuchar la interpretación simultánea. Aquellas personas que tengan un teléfono celular van a buscar los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte superior derecha del teléfono y accesar la parte que dice Language Interpretation o Interpretación de la lengua y seleccionan español. Aquellas personas que no vean el icono tienen que bajar la versión más actualizada de Zoom y tiene que ir al www.zoom.com/download. Thank you very much. Hello, muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Randolph Dominguez. Voy a ser uno de los intérpretes simultáneos de español. También van a estar escuchando mi voz. Me estoy trabajando en conjunto con mi colega, el señor Juan Bernal. Ya saben la explicación que Juan dijo. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am one of the Spanish interpreters working tonight and my friend Juan Bernal already gave all the instructions in the Spanish language. Thank you very much and...
Thank you. If I could ask our Haitian Creole interpreters, Sergio and Vina, to please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole.
Bonsoir, mesdames, mesdames, Vina, Frankie. Ma fait traduction en Creole haïtien ensemble avec l'autre monde. Et puis, pour jouer en accès, nos services d'interprétation...
Moi, moi, dem. Tout le monde cap qui parle.
Gardez pour globla.
Please go ahead, Sergio. Introduce yourself. Okay. If I could ask our Mandarin interpreters, Maple and Way, if you could please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin?
Thank you. My name is Maple. Hi,大家好,我是Maple.我跟Tina今天晚上会为大家做国语的翻译。下面有请Tina. Thank you. Tina, please.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Tina. If I could ask our Cantonese interpreters, Anna and Terry, to introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. 那么你就要去Zoom网站更新最新的版本。网站是zoom.us/download.多谢。Thank you. Terry, it's your turn.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. If I could ask our Vietnamese interpreters, Vi and Du Yan, if you could please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese?
Hello, my name is Vi Phong Lee. I'm the other Vietnamese interpreter. Thank you, my dear. 我是V.如果小姐有需要通电的话，请进到这个窗口，在右下角的页面 Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vi Phong Lee. I'm the other Vietnamese interpreter.
Thank you. If I could ask our ASL interpreters to introduce themselves, Michael, Katie, and Sharon?
Hi. My name is Michael and I'm one of the ASL interpreters.
Hi, my name is Katie. I'm one of the ASL interpreters.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you for assisting us this evening. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. And I just wanted to remind everybody, if you could please make sure to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment this evening and public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Ms. Sullivan will remind everyone about the public comment rules again later on. But just a quick reminder, for those of you who have signed up to testify, please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name that you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. From this point forward, we're going to be asking all speakers to also identify what neighborhoods they reside in along with stating their name and their affiliation. This will give our members a sense of what we are hearing from our various neighborhoods. And it's also a practice across all public bodies in Boston, and we thank you for your cooperation. And now I'd like to move on to some exciting news. I would like to welcome our new school committee member, Admani De Arujio, who was appointed last week by Mayor Walsh. Mr. De Arujio is a lifelong resident of East Boston and serves as the Vice President of Regulatory Affairs and General Counsel of the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. He's also a graduate of Boston Public Schools, including attending the Bradley Elementary, the Umana Academy, and also Boston Latin School. We welcome him tonight, and he's also a future parent of BPS students and just had a newborn, so congratulations on that. And I would like to just ask if you would like to say a few words.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I'm very excited to be here tonight and great to see many of my colleagues here, the superintendent and staff, and of course, the team of interpreters. As our chair said, you know, lifelong connection to East Boston, to BPS in particular. I've been a volunteer for over twenty years now and also working at the health center, one of the largest community partners for BPS. So, very excited now to be, you know, even more part of the team, I think, and excited to support and help. I hope that my background in public health in particular and also in working with youth can really help, you know, all of us here and the staff and so forth during this, you know, incredible historic time, you know, in the city of Boston, in our country, and especially in our school district. So, very much look forward and wonderful to see all the amazing work that's being done by the staff and team in the school committee. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much and welcome aboard. Welcome to the team. So, in a moment, the BPS... Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just stop for one second before I move on with that. If there are any committee members that would like to say any welcome, please feel free to to say something because we haven't had a moment to officially welcome you.
Well, I wasn't waving to speak. I strictly wanted to say welcome. Look forward to working with them.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Robinson.
I too, I want to say welcome and glad to hear that you have two young ones. So that I know as much as you love all age groups, you'll be thinking a lot about how do we make sure all of our kids start school with the best of beginnings. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Tran.
Welcome, Mr. DeJaro. You'll be facing with a mirror of new issues given the current pandemic. So, roll your sleeve and get on board.
Thank you.
Okay, and Superintendent, would you like to say anything?
Yes, I welcomed him before. I'm so happy to have you on the team here and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you, everybody. Again, welcome. So, in a moment, the BPS budget team will provide us with a fiscal year 2022 budget overview with a particular focus on school budgets. And at this time, I would like to invite the Superintendent, Superintendent Casillas, to give opening remarks and also to present the team.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members and the listening public. So excited to be here today with you to talk about our budget. As you know, it's $1.3 billion budget, serving our fifty-two-plus-thousand students now. And it builds off of Mayor Walsh's commitment to the Boston Public Schools' five-year strategic plan that we've been working on and that you all have been doing listening sessions on recently. And so, thank you for doing that as we try to align our work to our budget priorities in thinking not only how we were imagining BPS with the five-year strategic plan, but now as we think about reimagining BPS, given the past year of the pandemic and the incredible disruption that has caused in our children's lives and our families and the supports that we have to give. I think you'll see much of the investment reflected in those priorities to support children and families. And then also an alignment of the work that we have moving ahead. As we go through these budget hearings, we will begin to talk about that with the public. It will shift and change as we listen to the public in terms of their priorities. One big thing that we have not talked a lot about that we allude to in this budget presentation is the Esser II funding, known as the CARES II funding, the $123 million of investment from the federal government to really deal with the recovery and return aspects of our budget. And so, we are going to be talking more about that. We don't yet have that funding, so we don't have that baked in yet to this presentation today. We have some broad categories of how we'd like to spend that and some set aside for that, but we'd like to really engage with our public, our school leaders, and talk about the $123 million and how we might use that over the next year to two years to really recover well, address any learning loss, address the returning strong components that we would need and make sure that we are being thoughtful and comprehensive about that funding. It does have to be spent by September of 2023. So, over the next month or two, we will take time to really get a sense from our community on what we should do with those dollars exactly. So, the application is due by the end of July, so we will be coming to you with that as well. So, I am going to turn it over to our student CFO, Marcus McNeil, who is going to get us started. Marcus?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marcus McNeil, a junior at Family High School and currently residing in Dorchester. I'm here to send a message of transparency and candidness to you all tonight. I was asked to come to this budget hearing by Chief Financial Officer Nathan Cooter. Nathan and I have worked together since the spring of 2020, and I met him through my role as chairperson of the Student Superintendent Executive Cabinet. The SSEC is a team of high school students that come together to serve as advisors to Dr. Casillas's executive team. Chief Cooter has become a mentor and advocate for my success, and he allows me to express my thoughts and give candid advice on our district's budget and all things surrounding our schools. While I hold many titles sometimes as chairperson of the SSEC, I'm also often called the Student Chief Financial Officer by Chief Cooter and Dr. Casillas. But tonight, I'm a Boston Public School student. Now, let me be honest. Nathan and I have conversations around the budget. And although sometimes we have different ideas and visions, we are able to ask tough questions to each other, which often prompts a long response, but we both align on the goal of ensuring that every student in this district is cared for and every opportunity is provided to them. Chief Cooter has allowed me to review the budget, and we are currently working on getting the firsthand experience on how the budget is tied together. With that being said, I strongly believe that this new vision for our district will allow us to reemerge as more equitable, transparent, and capable. But your concerns are important to us, and please do not censor yourself. Your voice is important, and as a student in this district who sometimes struggles with speaking up, you matter and your feedback matters as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus, and good evening, everyone. I want to thank Marcus again for joining us this evening and for encouraging others to use their voice throughout this process. Tonight, we've asked several people to join us to discuss our FY22 budget and to tell us about their experience with particular investments. We want to show the faces behind the numbers and in doing so amplify the many voices in our district. It seemed fitting, of course, to begin with the most important voice, that of a student. And if we don't get this budget right for Marcus, his classmates, and the students throughout the district, then we are not living out our vision. I'm just going to take a moment and share the presentation as we begin. With that, Chairman, Chairperson Oliver Davila and members of the school committee, thank you again for allowing me to come to present on behalf of the superintendent, the district, and the students of Boston. I will do my best to do as well as our student CFO did this evening. The focus of tonight's budget is schools, and we're going to talk about how we will use our resources in fiscal year 22 to make sure schools return well, recover strong, and reimagine what is possible for our students. Our collective urgency to close achievement gaps was the foundation of this budget. And we started our budget process rooted in this statement from the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Policy. As COVID-19 reveals the economic, health, and educational disparities many of us knew were present before the pandemic, we need to redouble our efforts to close opportunity gaps and guarantee an excellent education for all students. I've said it before, and we begin tonight again by focusing on those students who need public education the most and providing intensive support to those schools who are struggling to improve. That way, we can ensure all students have the same opportunity to achieve greatness. The fiscal year 22 budget proposed $1.3 billion general fund allocation features targeted investments in academic, health and wellness, and community supports. Over ninety-five percent of this proposal represents direct services to students in schools through direct funding to schools. And tonight's hearing will provide more information about what is included in that amount. Combined with our proposals in school services budgeted centrally, 100% of this proposed investments will see an immediate and direct impact on our schools. In two years, we have transformed our foundation for quality, guaranteeing all students in school communities critical resources. We are extremely proud that over the last two years, we have added 142 social workers and almost 118 family liaisons. This would not be possible, of course, without the strong commitment from Mayor Walsh and the city of Boston. At a time when other mayors are expecting dramatic cuts to school budgets, we will progress towards these goals with new investments from the city of Boston. I continue to believe that Boston stands apart for its financial commitment to schools. Few of my colleagues throughout Massachusetts, and you've heard me talk about this at prior hearings, but throughout Massachusetts and really throughout the nation, are talking about major investments coming out of this pandemic. So, it's remarkable that at a time of great uncertainty throughout the city that we would be able to have additional investments in our schools and take a step beyond the maintenance budget to increase our support. Throughout this budget process, we'll explain how the superintendent is leveraging three financial resources to fulfill her vision for our students. When used thoughtfully, these three sources of funds represent a tremendous opportunity to support students and make lasting change in our district. The first source of funding is our operating budget or general funds. This is the funding we receive directly from the city of Boston. The second source of funding is federal. BPS will receive approximately $123 million, as the superintendent mentioned, through the Esser II Fund due to the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act. We have not fully budgeted this amount and have not presented the full plans for both fiscal year '22 and '23, and we plan to bring more information to you as a school committee and to the broader school community later in March. And of course, the last source of funding that we're going to discuss throughout the budget process is our capital budget, which is the funding we use to improve our facilities. As we evaluate how to use our resources, we are focused on those investments that will have an impact beyond a single year. We have an obligation to develop a sustainability plan for any new investments, particularly those paid out of the federal relief funds. For each of the funding sources, we highlighted risks associated with these investments that are either misaligned to our vision or do not plan for sustainability. The discussion tonight, we're going to talk in detail about enrollment challenges facing our district. We continue to see enrollment declines throughout the city and across all grade spans. As we invest in supporting schools with declining enrollment, we need a long-term plan for how to address our overall capacity. It's important that we still reduce capacity in our system that is no longer needed, which will allow us to focus our resources on supporting the students that we do continue to enroll. Later, when we begin to reimagine what is possible for our students, I'll share some ideas of what this adjustment could look like. While these challenges facing our district are daunting, we are excited to present a student-centered fiscal year 22 operating budget. The proposed budget is framed with the guiding principles of return, recover, and reimagine. To that end, we are highlighting investments aligned to the three guiding principles. Our current planning includes $12 million in new investments to ensure we return well, $50 million in investments to ensure we recover strong, and $20 million set aside for us to reimagine what is possible for our students. This is the beginning part of our conversation around the resources that we have for our students. We're excited to dive in with you as a community. The first focus tonight is in our budget is the work to return well, to get all students back, students and staff back into buildings when it's safe to do so, and then get back to the work that we love to return even stronger. We've asked ourselves the critical questions of what it will take to reopen schools safely for all students every day, what the COVID response investments will need to be, the things that we did this year that we know we want to continue as part of our baseline for operations going forward, like one-to-one computing and technology. And we also asked ourselves, what work do we pause in order to deal with the pandemic that we need to return to as a district? Know that COVID-19 has had a disproportionate impact on students of color, English learner, students with disabilities, and students and families experiencing poverty. In order to help them recover from this disruption in their lives and to their education, we must prepare a multi-year plan to support students in three critical areas: academic supports, health and wellness supports, and community supports. Tonight, we'll be highlighting several investments specifically geared around building community and supporting students. Before we do that, we want to revisit the conversation about the impact the pandemic has had on our district, mostly in the form of enrollment. That's separate from the impact it's had on our individual students and school communities. This graphic represents the conversation that we started about enrollment projections back at the school committee retreat in December. I'm going to review tonight some of the important context around enrollment as a way to remind us again of the challenges that are facing individual schools because it is so central to our budget process. Total actual enrollment declined by 2,286 students, or 4.3%, between October 2019 and October 2020. This represents the largest drop in enrollment in the last fifteen years. This is also the third consecutive year of significant enrollment declines. Enrollment has dropped by nearly 5,000 students, 8.5% over the last three years. The decline was most pronounced in elementary grades, which declined about 1,800 students. And our concern is that enrollment in grades K0 through 5 has now dropped about 3,500 students over the last three years. Our current enrollment, the number of students that we enroll in the district right now, is the most important predictor and most important factor for estimating how many students we anticipate serving in future years. In particular, our entry grades, K0, K1, K2, those grades serving students who are three, four, five years old, represent our best opportunity to grow enrollment and keep families in the city. If we don't enroll students in these early grades, we often don't see them enroll in BPS. This is why universal pre-kindergarten is such a critical strategy for our district. Of course, we also see new students enroll in the district at the high school level. Another Of course, we also see new students enroll in the district at the high school level, another common entry grade. And this is why the Superintendent has challenged us all to reimagine what the high school experience can be. In the slides and posted online, you will see a number of dives into enrollment across different demographic groups. The first one that we look at is enrollment by race and ethnicity. The thing to note in terms of the longer-term trends in elementary is that we are seeing some growth in the black population. Whereas the Latinx population, there was a decline across the whole city, not just BPS. What we noticed at the start of the process, when we began enrollment projections in the fall, is that students of color are in schools that are experiencing a higher than average decline. This is why we thought it was a critical investment strategy and a strategy around equity to support schools with declining enrollment. We also look across grade span and program type, whether or not in gen ed, general education settings, special education centers or English learner programs. I highlighted a couple of the big key, the grade level stuff a few slides ago, but total actual enrollment declining across most grades. I mentioned already that in elementary was the decline we saw most and that we saw the biggest decline among English learner programs, which has declined by about 659 students. What we have done is make sure that we are supporting and maintaining our capacity in English learner programs, recognizing that this is a population that may return and that we want to have the capacity to serve them in the fall. Mentioned already, but one of the things that we saw in enrollment projections overall and enrollment overall was not that we lost more students than we would in any typical year. Meaning, the students who were in BPS last year, many of them still remain in BPS this year. What we saw mostly was that we didn't have new students arriving in the district. And of course, our largest population of new arrivers is our English learner population. So we did see the English learner programs were impacted by fewer students this year. With those highlights in enrollment, I'm going to turn it over to Miriam Rubin, our Budget Director, who will walk us through how enrollment and funding are tied in Boston.
Thanks Nate. So these enrollment trends matter for budgeting in large part because of our weighted student funding model, which is the way that the majority of funds in BPS are allocated to schools. Weighted student funding, for those of you who don't know, is also known as student-based budgeting, fair student funding or student-centered funding. It's become a popular funding model for districts with complex and changing student demographics who seek to allocate resources in an equitable and transparent way. It supports schools in being able to build their budget to best meet the needs of their students. Instead of allocating staff or resources directly to schools, the model allocates dollars that are then tied to students. Students get specific weights that are differentiated based on different student characteristics. This means in its simplest form that dollars follow students. The dollar amount per pupil gets multiplied by the number of students we are expecting to attend a particular school. And that then is translated into the allocation a school receives in their budget. So rather than starting with the services or staffing, we are starting by gaining and understating of who the students are that we're serving and what their unique needs are, and then funding according to that. As school enrollment, student makeup and needs change, funding levels change correspondingly. Weighted student funding is structured to fund schools based on the eight student categories that are listed here in this slide. Students at each grade get a basic level per pupil allocation, which you can see in the first row of this table where it says grade level weight. You will then see that students identified in different categories get allocations that are added on to their initial grade level allocation. Every student in the district starts out with a grade level weight or base funding amount. With or than additive, which means that a student with disabilities who is also coming from a low-income household would get their base allocation, the allocation for a student with disabilities, and then also the allocation given for students facing economic disadvantage. It is important to us that these categories listed here remain reflective of the ways that we want to ensure we are supporting students and we strive to regularly reevaluate and make adjustments to them in order to ensure this. While weighted student funding captures the basic level of differentiation needed to move us towards equitable funding, we recognize that there are also factors such as family choice and assignment and overall enrollment trends that must be accounted for outside of the weighted student funding model in order to ensure equitable access to educational opportunities across the district. It is for this reason that we have begun investing in a foundation for quality that ensures that schools have the positions and funding they need outside of weighted student funding to establish a strong foundation for their students. The concept of the Foundation for Quality was built off of a previous model we called sustainability funding, which went to providing additional funding to schools that cannot meet their minimum staffing requirements with their weighted student funding allocation alone. Starting in FY21, we wanted to go beyond sustainability and think about what schools truly needed to build a strong foundation for quality. Within the foundation, all schools receive an allocation to pay for a principal and a school secretary, along with a coordinator of special education and a full-time nurse allocation. We also provide supplemental supports and funding to schools to ensure that they have a baseline level of guaranteed funding beyond what they typically need to meet staffing requirements. Each school's baseline amount varies by enrollment and need, with higher need schools having a higher per pupil baseline amount. For FY22, the foundation is more important than ever before. As we move to outline our investments in our recover section of this presentation, we will focus on how we have not only built out the scope of this foundation further through the investment of a full-time family liaison and a social worker at every school, but also increase the scale of its impact through greater supplements for schools to maintain services for their students. This slide shows a breakdown of all the funding sources we use to ensure that we are funding schools equitably and guaranteeing access to student support. It includes weighted student funding as well as the Foundation for Quality positions that I just spoke about and supplements, which I also spoke about earlier. You will note here that the first line designated for weighted student funding is showing a significant reduction from last year to FY22, this upcoming year, due to the enrollment declines that Nate Cooter discussed earlier. You will also see, however, an increase in both the Foundation for Quality positions and supplement amounts, which are intended to offset this decline and also to go beyond that by providing additional support to students in BPS. Also reflected here is the funding we provide on top of the foundation and on top of weighted student funding. We have a set of designated resources under turnaround and transformation that are targeted directly towards our transformation school and another allocation to schools running programs that have unique needs outside of what weighted student funding can fund, such as vocational programming and inclusion. Schools also receive federal funding through Title I and IDA grants, which provide additional support for students facing economic disadvantage and students in special education. Bringing us back to our focus for this year's budget on return, recover and reimagine, our focus for recover is to ensure that school communities have what they need to not only repair the damage done by COVID-19, but also to create the conditions in which students and families can thrive. In order to do this, we see it as essential to both provide stability to school communities despite declining enrollment and also to invest in social, emotional and family support. Our first priority in this area of recover is to mitigate the impact of student enrollment declines on the student experience. Over the last 10 years, we have been caught in a difficult cycle of enrollment declines leading to decrease in funding, then leading to reductions in staffing and programs that families want, leading then to less families picking schools with declining enrollment, then leading to more declines in enrollment and on and on. These declines and the associated cuts have historically had a disproportionate impact on our black and Latinx students. And we are aiming this year to make investments that stop this cycle. Our students have seen enough instability within the current context of our world and we know it is our responsibility to mitigate that instability as much as possible. To that end, we have committed to ensuring that schools don't have to make the cuts that you might typically see with these types of decline. Instead, we've invested $18.5 million beyond the typical soft landing support we provide to schools to supplement weighted student funding in order to mean services for students. While we have still had to make some difficult decisions around the capacity of our schools and have closed classrooms in places where longer-term enrollment trends indicated it was necessary to do so, this investment has gone to ensuring that schools don't have to cut to support staff and programs that are so essential to the educational experience of our students. So with that, I'm going to pause from speaking for a moment and hand it over to Andrew Bra, our Head of School at Brighton High School, who will speak firsthand about what his school is experiencing for the upcoming year and ways this investment is going to go to supporting that. Andrew, take it away.
Thank you very much. And thank you, members of the School Committee, for giving me a few moments today to talk about Brighton High and the impact of the budget proposal on our students. For all the reasons described in the presentation, in particular, the declining enrollment of SDI students, Brighton is projected for a significant reduction in students in the coming school year. And Brighton has been caught in the cycle that was just described for at least the past decade. Decline in enrollment, reducing course offerings, meaning fewer students are choosing the school, leading to reduced funds and so forth, year after year after year. If this were a typical budget year where our budget was reduced based on the projections, Brighton High would have lost the following programs for our students. We would have had to eliminate the majority of our AP classes and a number of honors classes. We would have had to reduce significantly the arts programming that's available to our students. We would have had to eliminate the tech ed, the career and tech ed offerings that we have. We would have to eliminate courses which support the high numbers of overage, undercredited English learners who enroll at Brighton High. And this is particularly important because it's these courses that allow us to successfully get our overage, undercredited English learners to graduation to earn their diploma. In a typical year, this also would have meant a reduction in critical support services, services, support services that are essential coming out of this year and a half of COVID. That would include our engagement counselors, social workers and guidance counselors. So this budget proposal, this district proposal allows Brighton to continue offering the rich diversity of courses to our students and to our students, to our students of color, to our special education students, to our English language learners. We can maintain our AP classes. We actually will be able to expand by one, possibly two, our AP offerings. We're going to be able to maintain our arts programming. With a reconfiguration within our existing resources, we'll be able to expand career and tech ed offerings to include biosciences in the coming year. And overall, we'll be able to offer more advanced coursework. So I think it's critical, critical to understand and to appreciate that this is a budget that is fundamentally grounded in equity. These resources ensure that students at Brighton High School, one of the city's remaining open enrollment comprehensive high schools, have access to the diverse offerings, the diverse resources and the incredible opportunities that are available to students at other schools that are not experiencing enrollment declines for a variety of reasons out of the control of the students at that school. And so for me and for our students, this is an incredible, incredible opportunity to come out so strong from COVID and build an incredible path forward for our students, for our school and for our community.
Thank you so much. It's always much more impactful to hear it directly from the source, so I really appreciate your words, Andrew. So on top of what we spoke about around this $18.5 million to mitigate enrollment declines, we really wanted to provide the additional social, emotional and family support that we know our schools and students deserve. For that reason, as part of recover, we propose an acceleration of our rollout of these supports by investing in 81 new family liaison positions and 95 new social worker positions for next year. These investments, combined with our nursing investments from two years ago, will be critical components to a broader hub schools model that supports school communities in responding rapidly to student and family needs and coordinating supports across schools. And with that, I want to hand it over to somebody else, Carla Jenkins, Principal of the Higgins and Lewis, sorry, the Higgins and K-2 School in Roxbury, to hear, to share her vision for these positions and the way that they will support her school community. Carla?
Good evening, committee members, Dr. Castellius and the greater community. It is a pleasure to be before you this afternoon. Well, it's evening now. It's all running together. I am Carla Jenkins. I am the proud principal of the Higgins and K-2 in Roxbury. We are daily cultivating the genius of our youngest learners. And I just wanted to give an overview of who we are as a school community. We are an early childhood school who serves students in grades three, who are three, in grades K0 through second grade. We have three strands in our school, an SEI strand and two inclusion strands. We also have an ABA strand that we started in our growing. At the Higgins, it is my belief that even in the midst of a pandemic, a dual pandemic in a neighborhood that is rich with the history of Boston, we are responsible for cultivating, curating and innovating on behalf of our youngest learners because they will be the BPS graduate. And as such, when you look at our budgets, much like my colleague, the Higgins has seen significant declines over the years and we've had to make some difficult decisions in regards to making sure that we're maintaining our community for the long game and not just to survive for the next school year. And so in this budget year, we've had to close the classroom. I will say that our enrollment decline is one that is historic and not one that is solely driven by our current enrollment challenges that we are having. And so at the Higgins, what I will say is that every day my staff comes in and we're working for and on behalf of 132 brilliant minds. And one of the ways that we're committed to doing that is making sure and ensuring that we are effectively engaging families around what their students are learning and supporting the social, emotional learning of every student, but supporting the whole child and really defining what that means. For us, that means that we're deliberately grounding our work in anti-racist culturally responsive practices. In all of our work, it means that every day, every child gets access to grade-level, standards-aligned work because that is the true anti-racist practice that we are called to do and that we're building on the funds of knowledge of our families and bringing it into the classroom. As a result, it's really important for you to understand the demographic of the Higgins. We have an extremely large homeless population. By November of this year, we had approximately 30 families. I told you, we're only 132 in enrollment this year. We had 30 families. I'm proud to say that my team, with the work of my CFC and my social worker, that my team, with the work of my C F C and my social worker and our community partner, has been able to decrease that number and support families in getting affordable housing. And we're down to twelve, but it took a mighty work by a very small and limited team. I currently have a part-time social worker and a part-time community field coordinator or C F C. And we meet weekly and we look at student data, not just attendance, not behavior, but how are our kids entering each day, being able to engage in who they are so that they can learn? And if their basic needs are not met, there's no opportunity for my young learners to really get fully into whatever curriculum I provide for them. And so for next year, I'm proud to say that with some advocacy, some conversations with my friends, Dr. Castellius and Nate, we're able to have a full-time social worker. That is critical to the work that we're doing at the Higgins. We aren't going to be able to do what we do on behalf of children without that work. We have several students who are a part of the system. And it's my belief, it's my mantra, it's my expectation that we're always saying and we're also living, that students' narrative is not the experiences that they go through, but who they are. And my kids need to be able to walk through the door every day, fully who they are. And so it is the daily work. The work of family engagement, if you know me, you know, I used to be on the other side of this, working for the district and really negotiating and supporting schools, really building the best family engagement practices. Liaisons are critical to the work we do. It's not just about the numbers that walk into the door, but really authentically supporting our families in a way that allows them to engage actively in their child's education, knowing what their kids are supposed to be learning and what the expectations are by the end of the school year, having opportunities to be a voice in the governing committees of a school parent council, school site council, but in their child's classroom, most importantly. We always say, parents are a child's first teacher and they know their kids best. We have a responsibility as a district and I have a responsibility as a school leader to ensure that we are making sure that we are building bridges and not burning them in order to really connect, really understand. I'm a Jamaican-born girl, so family in a village means everything. And so how we show up every day is really important. Today was your favorite T-shirt day at the Higgins for Spirit Day, so I have my one love shirt on, because you know, Jamaican one love, always, let's get together and feel alright. We're trying, y'all, we're trying. But even better than that was the engagement I had with a mom this morning who wanted to understand how she could ensure that her kid could come in two or four days. What could I do? It is a meeting I had with my social worker, my nurse, and my C F C this afternoon to look at our attendance data, to look at our families who need, who are homeless and need housing or transportation. It is to look at the academic data and make sure. My staff will tell you any day, if there's anything I stand for, is that every kid, every day in the Higgins deserves the best education. And the only way we can do that is if we effectively budget our resources to meet our youngest learners. I also am in Roxbury, and I also think it's very important that I name for the district that we need to start investing in Roxbury in real and authentic ways. We have seen the significant impact of not investing in the neighborhoods where the majority of the families and the students that come to our schools are students of color. And so if we're investing in anti-racist work and not just espousing it, that also means putting our dollars where our mouths are. And so I expect my community hold me accountable. As the school leader of the Higgins, and I hold the district accountable, and anybody on here will tell you I do that. And I want to lift up every student voice. I want everyone to become Kimani. Kimani and I met each other in the summer. And that's who I envision when I look at my three-year-olds. The opportunity to be the B P S graduate going to an Ivy League, really epitomizing what it means. But we've got to put our money where our mouths are.
Well, thank you for that, Carla. We've known each other for a while at this point, and I feel like every time we talk, even if it's in a setting with all these other people, I moved and I learned something from you, so thank you for that. So, and it's also fitting that you're talking because we first met in the Office of Engagement and now I'm kind of transitioning into talking about our investment in expanding family engagement liaison in all schools. So our new investment in family liaison builds upon the investment we made last year in our transformation schools by ensuring that all schools will have one full-time family liaison in their building for F Y twenty-two. The liaisons that were hired this past year are truly reflective of the racial, cultural, and linguistic diversity of the B P S community and have been able to build deep and authentic relationships with our families through this difficult year. They've been critical assets to the schools, to school communities as they have helped families navigate challenges presented by the pandemic and connected them to community resources related to housing, food access, counseling, and more. We believe that it is essential for families at all B P S schools to have trusted points of contact reflective of the school community to go to when questions and challenges arise and that this investment is important, an important step to take on ensuring that this is possible. So with that, we're lucky enough to have Richard Mitchell, who is currently working as a family liaison at the Lee K through eight school to talk about his experience. It feels like we're in an office of engagement reunion, Richard, so I'm excited to have you here and be able to introduce you. So take it away.
Thank you, Miriam. Yes, it does feel like a reunion of sorts, so thank you. Thank you, Dr. Castellius, school committee of the guest speakers. Thank you for this time to be able to just share a little bit about my own personal experience as a family liaison, but even more importantly, how I got started or even in this role in the first place. So I'm a father of four B P S alumni. My last child graduated from Fenway High School last year, is currently attending Dartmouth College. Go back to two thousand and six, when my kids were just entering into elementary. The Eliu Greenwood, I met the F C O C for the Greenwood, which is an earlier iteration of the role that I'm in currently. The F C O C welcomed me and my family and countless others and gave me insight, guidance on how to navigate the school physically and literally, she helped me understand my role for my children, how to support them, how to guide them, and to help them advocate for the education that they so well deserved. The F C O C at that time helped me understand to take the role as a parent seriously. And I did take it seriously for not just my kids, but for all of the peers of my kids as well. I worked tirelessly on parent council, school site council. I attended parent university workshops. I even attended P Ds for staff, so I could have an understanding as a parent on what I need to do to help to build the school community. Fast forward to fast forward to two thousand and fourteen, after several years of volunteerism, I was offered a position in B P S working in the Office of Engagement. The role was an engagement specialist and was there to support schools that no longer had the F C O Cs in the building. Fast forward again to two thousand and eighteen, I was in the role of a family liaison. And that was an engagement role at the district level that once again still supported schools with engagement. But the only problem at that time was our office was basically dismantled, restructured. So as we talk about reunion, this was the last time in terms of being with Carla Jenkins and several other of my peers that I grown to love, care about, get insight from, we were basically blown in the wind. Some of us were laid off, and at a time that we were laid off, schools were still stuck to fend for themselves and resolve matters where schools were in the process of doing personal subcommittees, racial tension, and other matters that our office was integral in supporting. Lucky enough, though, I was able to return back to B P S in two thousand and nineteen in the current role that I'm in, but it was just titled differently. I was called a family coordinator. So as a family coordinator, I helped with parent council elections, fundraising efforts, connecting with families that were experiencing homelessness and other issues. It was my first year. I was really looking forward to being very creative, and then all of a sudden, we were hit with the pandemic. So now we had to move to a virtual world and connect with families, connect with students. I had to think about what I could do in my role, given that I wasn't doing instruction. And it didn't just, it wasn't enough to make just phone calls about attendance. There needed to be more. So I began to host coffee hours, starting in April, and I carried that on until the end of the school year. The coffee hours were just a platform, a space for families, for staff to all come together and just vent, to share, to cry, to inspire, to figure out what we're going to do next. Early on, it was maybe two, three people. I'm happy to say that families that didn't know each other got to know each other and became friends. I'm happy to know that we were able to connect staff, have families also realize that staff are going through the same things and staff understand that families are going through the same things. Was able to actually even get a DJ to do a virtual party, if you will. And these are one of the things that being in that role allowed me to be very creative, allowed to look past just the academics, but also look at the social, emotional of not only our students, but our families. And if our families are not right, our students cannot be right. So as this school year started, I continued to look at supporting the league by doing some of the same virtual events. The things that you generally would do for school, school preview dates, we had to do a school reopening and that was both for our staff as well as for our families, giving them the idea of what is the layout of the school, letting them know that their child will be safe, will be supported, will be loved, will be attended to in any of their needs and concerns. I also actually held a coffee hour to provide a platform for families on January sixth where people had to have an opportunity to speak about what they were feeling. I look forward to continuing with the rest of the year. At the end of this year, we will have an opportunity to have our first virtual Black History art show. And our staff, our families, our students are all invited to participate in their artwork with a theme that speaks to what does Black History mean to them. I enjoy my role because it gives me an opportunity to meet families where they are, encourage them, inspire them, to help them advocate for quality education, just like I was able to do for my own students. I would want to emphasize the importance of family liaisons. The role of a family liaison is that between schools, between families. We have to make sure that families feel welcome. So if we're in the business of students and families, then our role is essential, just like a teacher or any other staff person. I also would like to just add, I have been at this work for quite some time, in terms of volunteer, but also working for the district. What I realize is that while I have a whole bunch of, or gained a whole bunch of knowledge, I still need to learn more. And so having our engagement coach is also essential. Having someone to be able to talk us through, how do you go in and create strategies that are effective? And so I would advocate also for the coaches to continue to be there for us, for every school to have a family liaison. So, that being said, I thank you for your time. Thank you for listening.
Richard? I wish you'd just said my last slide because you said it so much better, and I'm just looking at the part where I said family liaison support with providing community resources and more, and just thinking about the and more. More isn't the right word to describe what you just talked about, so just thank you so much. So our last investment that I want to highlight in the Recover section is the investment in social workers that also builds upon our F Y twenty-one investment by moving beyond our initial investment of social workers and transformation schools this year to bringing at least a point five social worker into every B P S school. As with family liaison, we have worked hard to ensure that social workers are culturally, linguistically, and racially reflective of our students and are receiving the training necessary to be culturally responsive to our school communities. Social workers will be providing both individual student and family support that honors different methods of healing while working to address racist and harmful structures and conditions in schools and contributing to the design and implementation of school-wide culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. I now want to welcome our last guest speaker of the evening, Brandon Lopez, who is a social worker at the Higgins and Lewis and is going to speak with us about his experience.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brandon Lopez and I'm the transformation social worker at the Higgins and Lewis three-to-eight school. I want to thank you all for your service to the Boston Public Schools community and your steady leadership during this very chaotic time. It is an honor to be in front of you all today, representing my school and my fellow social work colleagues. It is also with eternal gratitude that the district has finally seen the value in having a social work presence in every one of our schools. Although I saw this as a unique opportunity to be part of the first social work cohort to work in the B P S social work department, I realized this was long overdue. Under the leadership of Carmen O'Hara, social workers are no longer as many described as an island alone in the corner of the building. We strive to implement consistent best practices across the district and finally get a chance to learn from the social work-specific professional development training. Social workers are no longer on an island, but rather are a part of a family and a network. Each day, we build something greater so that future social workers have a foundation to stand on. And it would be a shame as a social worker to not take this time to advocate for improvements. And so without a further ado, as you consider the budget for social workers, I strongly encourage you to consider adding funding for supervision for all school social workers. Supervision is a crucial function of the social work profession, and it's a shame that many of us have to pay out of pocket to receive quality supervision that allows us to improve on our practice and work towards our independent licensure. To put it in perspective, supervision can cost an average of about a hundred dollars an hour. In order to obtain our independent licensure, we need a total one hundred hours of supervision, which means we spend on average ten thousand dollars out of pocket for supervision. Supervision helps us develop our clinical practice and improve as professionals. An investment in funding supervision for social workers would undoubtedly benefit our social workers and also the greater Boston Public Schools community. I sincerely hope you consider this investment and help my description of my role will provide you with the understanding of the incredible benefits we provide our students, families, staff, and community. And so it's important to emphasize that our role is multifaceted. From providing individual and group counseling to addressing chronic absenteeism on our school-based attendance teams, we work diligently to address all of the needs we identify in our community. And I'm talking about all of the needs we identify. And so sparing you all of the details of my work, here is a very brief list of my role at the Higgins and Lewis. I coordinate the mental health services of all two hundred and fifteen students, manage community partnerships and mental health partnerships, promote and facilitate restorative justice circles, facilitate equity roundtables, create and manage our after-school programming, including eleven different school clubs, support every eighth grader with their high school choices, I'm talking about every eighth grader, to make sure that they had first priority pick for their high school choices, participate in student support team, attendance team, M T S S team, and administration team, and most importantly, support students experiencing a crisis. There's honestly not enough time to provide you the entire list of responsibilities. There's honestly not enough time to provide you the entire list of responsibilities of my role at the Higgins and Lewis, but what I can tell you is that social workers save lives. We promote equity and have an innate desire to systematically uplift our community thrive. Here is an example to provide you a picture of our work. I will be referring to the student as X. X has a history of sexual assault and abuse. They carry this pain with them from the moment they wake up to the time they fall asleep. During an individual counseling session, X reported wanting to just go to sleep and to yeet themselves out the window so that their pain would stop. And so I ask, what would you do in this situation? Unfortunately, many staff members may not know what to do. As social workers, we live and breathe a trauma-informed perspective and work to use the most effective evidence-based practices to treat trauma experienced by students like X. In this situation, I was able to invite our school nurse into the conversation, inform the principal and parent about their crisis, all while keeping the space safe for the student to continue sharing. We connected, we're connected with their partners and supported X in entering an inpatient facility to support them during this very difficult time. Without the training and understanding of trauma, this situation could have had a much different outcome. And so it's clear that social workers play a vital role in the students, families, and schools we serve. And I want to thank you for seeing our value and implore you to continue investing in our profession. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak, and I hope you all stay safe and healthy during these very concerning times. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, for incredibly powerful words. I don't I don't think there's an easy way to transition back to to budget after hearing the incredible work that you do. I'm I'm inspired by your story and by the work that you do and excited that our investments are aligned to being able to make sure that there are more resources like Brandon throughout our district and all the students who are going through this collective trauma. And, you know, for for Richard, Carla, and Andrew, thank you all for joining us this evening so that we could hear your voices. Really, we talk a lot about the numbers in a budget hearing, but that's not why we're here, and that's not how we've organized our work. And so I just am incredibly grateful that they took time out of their evening after long days to join us and 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 talk a little bit about their experience. I'm going to transition now to talking about what it means to reimagine what's possible for our students. And of course, they set the context nicely with the incredible work that they're doing at the school level. And I want to think about what it means to really reimagine. And this is the start of a conversation that we're going to have as a community. We're going to be talking about things we've already imagined, but that we've not yet completed as a district. We're going to be talking about things that we as a leadership team and the community are starting to imagine, but ideas that we have not fully fleshed out. And we're also going to be asking our community to imagine more. We want to hear more of your ideas, hear more of your needs, your creativity, because what we're talking about doing is planting seeds for the future. Of course, we need our students to recover strong. But we owe it to our students to be ready to execute on a bigger vision and to make our district even better for them when they are ready to move onto the next phase of their educational careers or into the next phase of their lives. So we're launching the work to reimagine our schools and our district for our students by removing the structures that limit our ability to realize our vision for students. We know that the support we're offering this year around enrollment declines is a stopgap measure. And as we redesign our district, we need to be thinking about the needs of the kids we serve. Of course, our awareness of the challenges facing the district has increased during the pandemic, but they're not new. In many ways, we need to return to the key levers, to the key challenges that we had identified many years ago. That includes facilities and learning environments, inclusive strategies to break down the barrier and make sure all of our students have an opportunity, no matter what supports they need to be successful in that opportunity. And finally, we want to talk about school-based investments to reimagine the structure of our schools, to reimagine the programming at our schools. And so we're starting to think about is a way to engage with individual school communities and regions of schools to partner together. We need to leverage the expertise of of Ms. Jenkins and Mr. Bott in their roles and their experience with students, be able to leverage that experience to really come up with better ideas for our system. As you are aware, we have been doing the difficult work of aligning our existing capital projects and programs with our overall vision. And to that end, we're coming back to you later with a capital budget that reflects a series of strategies about how we're going to reimagine the facilities that our students engage in. On the left, you'll see the rendering of the new Boston Arts Academy building. And yesterday, the MSBA made an important vote to continue the Carter School project that is going to be a tremendous resource for our students at that school. But we need to begin a pattern of breaking ground on new construction projects every year. We also need to reconfigure existing pathways to meet the needs of a K zero and K one to six pathway. Along with the seven to twelve expansions that we have started in this, we've continued in this year's budget, but we need to do more. And we need to reinvigorate our existing buildings, buildings for a reimagined student experience so that every student knows the experience of walking into a building that is bright and joyful and respects them as learners. Want to return to enrollment projections and talk a little bit about some of the data that we look at when we start to talk about enrollment projections, something we've talked about with this school committee before. The top line of the graph that's in orange represents the number of of children who were born to Boston-based residents by year. And the blue bar underneath represents how many of those, how many students we enrolled in kindergarten five years later. It's meant to show the relationship between the number of children who are born in Boston and how many students ultimately enroll in our public schools. This is what we refer to as a capture rate of students. What we see is that the number of students being born or the number of children being born in Boston has declined over the last few years. But in addition, our capture rate, the number of those students that enroll, has also declined. This has contributed to our year-over-year enrollment decline in elementary schools. What we know is that we have high-quality K zero, K one programs in BPS. We have invested multiple years in our K two, in our early childhood programs. We have begun to expand those opportunities in universal pre-K community-based programs. This is a proven strategy in BPS to close opportunity and achievement gaps in our system. And so when we look at our capture rate, we need to figure out ways to get more students into BPS schools and into BPS programs. We need to fulfill our promise of getting to a universal early childhood program so that every student, every neighborhood that wants a seat in BPS schools has a BPS in those school, a seat in those schools. I'm going to make a jump to talk about enrollment in seventh and eighth grade in our K to eight schools. What we find is that we created K to eight pathways with the promise that students who enrolled in K one would stay in the same school through eighth grade. But what we find is that roughly one-third of all our sixth graders in those K to eight schools do not return to the same school for seventh grade. This is the result that this then results in the fact that those seventh and eighth grade programs are not robust. They are under-enrolled and in awaited student funding district. It means that there's not enough enrollment to support a robust and rigorous middle, middle-grade program. So we have these K to eight schools that are not fulfilling either the consistent enrollment that we had hoped that they would. And it is not providing a high-quality rigorous program in the way that we vision for our middle grades. This is where we get to the imagining what's possible for our students. This is not something that we are proposing in this year's budget, but we're asking the community to consider, what would it mean to reimagine our K to eight schools, to reconfigure them to be K zero to sixth grade, to move seventh and eighth grades into our high schools, create seven to twelve pathways, and take the newly available classrooms to expand K zero and K one in all of our BPS schools? This would both open up high-demand, high-quality seats in our neighborhoods and would also increase the rigor and robust experiences for our seventh and eighth grade students. This is part of what we're thinking about, the type of thing we're reimagining for our school. Transitioning to those high schools. We've talked about enrollment declines at the high school level. This graph shows four different views of high school enrollment in Boston. The top line in yellow represents all high school-age students in Boston, regardless of what school they're enrolled in, regardless of what type of school they're enrolled in. The second line, the blue line, represents enrollment only in the Boston Public Schools, grades nine through twelve. The third line represents enrollment in private parochial Metco and other enrollment opportunities for high school students. And then the bottom line shows our charter school enrollment. BPS enrollment has declined over this period from eighteen thousand students in school year ten, eleven to sixteen thousand students in school year nineteen, twenty. And over that same period, charter school enrollment has increased four hundred percent. So the decline in BPS enrollment is almost entirely explained by students enrolling in charter school expansion. This slide shows information that we've talked about for several years now and discusses the enrollment in standalone middle schools, those schools that only serve sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Right now in Boston, as of this budget, we will have four standalone middle schools in next school year. Over the similar period that we just showed in our high schools, we have seen a decline from four thousand students in standalone middle schools back in two thousand and twelve to roughly a thousand students projected for next school year. This is partly due to demand, partly due to charter schools, which do begin grades five, serving in grades five and serve grades five through twelve, and is also partly due to our own efforts to reconfigure the district and provide more consistent pathways. And so this represents, of course, a part of the reimagining that we have already been talking about, but is not something that is fully complete. We want to reimagine and reconfigure our middle schools as we expand seven to twelve high schools. We see this as a cohesive strategy to reimagine the seventh and eighth grade experience, to provide students with more arts, more athletics, and more academics. We want to provide more opportunities and more rigor. We want to provide more access throughout the city for students, regardless of program or need or English learner status. And we want them to make sure that they are better prepared for high school and better prepared for post-secondary success. Of course, we're not saying that any of these things are foregone conclusion, and we're not mentioning specific schools as part of this because we want to engage schools directly. And so part of the money that we've set aside, and we're going to talk about this more in the March ninth hearing, where we let, talk about how we are leveraging S R part two funding more for school-based allocations and potential programs to expand these types of opportunities. But what we wanted to do was to begin to show how we're both using the reality of the data that we're looking at, the context of what our district has, and then using it to think about how we can better serve our students and better set our district up for success. And so we'll be working with with our school communities, partnering with different community groups, different schools coming together to address some of the areas around inclusive practices about early childhood expansion, including expanding rigorous opportunities at our high schools, really a broad spectrum. And what we want to hear from the community are the areas and the geographies where we need to invest. Carla has already mentioned tonight the need to really focus in Roxbury and do innovative and supportive investments in Roxbury. That's the type of 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 vision that we have, and that's the way that we want to reimagine our schools to better serve our students.
So that brings us to the end of our presentation for today. Just to close out, I want to highlight some of the materials that are available and were referenced earlier so that you can find them and dig in as much as, as much as you're interested in. One of our main priorities on the finance team is to ensure transparency for our work. And so we really make it a point to make sure that everything that we've presented and all the backup information is available at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. So there you'll find tonight's presentation along with district-wide and also school-specific budget documents and postings for this presentation and last, last week's school committee hearing as well. School by school comparison, comparisons of specifically of weighted student funding are available there as well as total allocations for each school and the preliminary budget for FY twenty two. All these documents, many of them have already been translated, and the rest of them are going to be translated very soon and will be available on the website as well. I'm just going to briefly walk through some of the documents that you see so that when you dig into the site, you'll you'll know what you're looking at. Right here, this slide is showing kind of a place where if you want to familiar, familiarize yourself with the budget and how all of our different allocations break down, this is the place to start. We break down our budget here in four main categories. The first is district, direct school expenses, and those are the items that are budgeted in school. And as you can see, this represents the largest portion of our budget. The next section is school services that are budgeted centrally, so there you won't see them directly in school budgets, but they are services that are going directly to schools. The third section is central administration, so this includes the superintendent, central academics teams, and other central operational support. And then finally, the last section is non-BPS student services, and those are services like transportation to charter schools that we provide to students in non-BPS schools. This next slide, which has very small print, so again, I encourage you to look directly at the website as an example of our WSF template, so our weighted student funding template. This is a template that every single school gets when they get their allocation of their budget. And it shows a comparison of this year's allocation to next year's proposed allocation. When you look carefully at it, you'll be able to see a breakdown of the number of students assigned in each weighted student funding category that I spoke about earlier. And you'll also be able to see the weight associated with each category and the per people allocation assigned to them. And then finally, you'll be able to look and see the totals in each category and the total weighted student funding allocation overall. This is a helpful way to see how students in particular schools are funded and how the enrollment and funding associated with each group has changed for a particular school from year to year. Another main document that that we encourage you to look at is our school allocation one pager. And again, this is a document that every school has and is given during, when when our budgets are released. So this here includes a total allocation of information on the total allocation of school, so weighted student funding plus all of the other funding sources that I talked about earlier. It's a good way to see what schools received in terms of the foundation for quality positions that we spoke about and other supplements and programmatic supports for each school. And again, you're able to compare what they received in FY twenty, twenty-one and comparing that to what we're proposing them to receive in FY twenty-two. Finally, we want to just invite you to continue to engage with us throughout this budget season and have listed here past and also upcoming hearings on the budget. We really appreciate your engagement in all aspects of the process. We appreciate you holding us accountable and asking the tough questions about the budget as we, as we go on, and we encourage you to continue to come out. We, our next hearing will be on March ninth, and we'll be focusing there on Central Office Department. And we look forward to continuing to answer your questions tonight and then continuing on throughout the season. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Miriam, and I just want to emphasize again, in an interest of transparency, make sure that these are all accessible. For the first time, we've translated all of our budget documents, including the full school committee, the school budget proposal in nine proposal in nine languages. And so those are all available on the the BPS website, and we encourage people to submit their questions and to continue to come to the hearings and provide feedback. So with that, I turn it back over to the school committee for your questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Chief Buder, and thank you to the team, Ms. Rubin. Thank you to Mr. Bot, Ms. Jenkins, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Mitchell, and Mr. McNeil for being with us tonight. And thank you for this thorough presentation. The committee will ask some questions after public comment, so we will now move into public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time. Specific policy matters are not answered at this time. But maybe the subject of late discussion by the committee. This evening. Three minutes, and I remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. While petition services receive an additional two minutes. To these who are listening to simultaneous interpretation on the difference channel, forward to the English language channel. Money is being translated from a non-English language. Speakers may resign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic, courage to consolidate their remarks. And to provide testimony. And testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Name and affiliation and what you were from before you begin. Please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. So please make sure you were signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comments. It's your turn to testify. Begin with our students. And Jason Diaz.
Hello? I think it can be heard. Can everyone see me?
We can see your picture and we can hear you.
Okay. Is Ari here too?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, you can begin then.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Ari Rodriguez. I'm a senior at Margarita Muñez Academy, a youth community organizer, Sociedad Latina, and a resident of Maripan.
Hello, my name is Jason Diaz. I am a senior at Madison Park, a youth community organizer, Sociedad Latina, and a resident of East Boston. We are here to advocate for the BPS budget to include immediate funding for more guidance counselors. We know one of the five goals the school committee is going to adopt is related to course and career readiness. We would like to see more investments for this goal. We are also here to ask for the removal of S R Os in our public schools and relocate this funding for our students' needs. We wanted to say that we are happy to see ninety-five new social work positions, and we want to say thank you and ask you to please keep adding more social workers to the budget every year.
Providence has come up with a solution to increase the number of support staffs such as mental health providers, nurses, and guidance counselors in their schools. This solution is important for the well-being of students and was proposed by the Providence Alliance for Student Safety in their Counselors Not Cops Campaign, which is a domain we should also adopt in BPS. Margarita Muñez Academy, a dual-language high school in Jamaica Plain, which services a predominant group of E L L students. Our students need even more school support such as family relations and guidance counselors. Typically, our school is made up of four hundred students to one single counselor who is tasked to with providing adequate resources and support for all of our student body needs. However, last year when a traumatic event occurred and a student was killed in our school, there was over ten counselors who were brought in to provide emotional support for students to process the aftermath of this event. After this event, I was emotionally wrecked and having the support was extremely helpful. I spoke with most of the counselors that were there to provide support, and I believe we should always have the support of those counselors, not just when something publicly traumatic happens in our school. Students in BPS are facing similarly traumatic experiences at home and and in private on a day-to-day basis. Where is the school support when these students need it?
In order to ensure the safety of our Black and Brown students, we should also prevent SROs from arresting students and instead implement transformative justice practices, which do not create a criminal record for the youth. Having school police in schools has led to higher rates of arrests, discipline, and violence. If there is no possibility to remove SROs in BPS, then it should be a priority to change the job descriptions of these officers. Could we reimagine their role to support students' social and emotional development or be part of the BPS restorative justice team? Students of color are arrested at a disproportionately higher rate, which leads them on the school-to-prison pipeline. In twenty-eight states in the United States, the share of arrested students who are Black is at least ten percent points higher than their share of enrollment in their schools. Also, students of color often bear the brunt of overly punitive, zero-tolerant tolerance policies in state laws that can lead to arrests for relatively minor misbehavior such as vandalism or classroom arguments. We need to make sure we are supporting our students and addressing the root causes of the issues they are facing, not reacting to the behavioral issues with policing efforts.
Lastly, throughout my last two years as a youth leader at Sociedad Latina, I have been able to be a part of a well-rounded and holistic support system. I have access to academic and social and emotional supports as well as safe spaces to voice personal concerns I face at home. BPS should continue to work with community-based organizations to support for our schools and provide a holistic approach to supporting our students. We would like to see more staff added to this department so that all schools have external partners and not just some schools. I have found a welcoming and nurturing community as so. And I would advocate for BPS to continue working with school partners to provide the safe spaces for our students.
Sociedad Latina Counselor Not Cops Campaign is advocating that BPS, one, use a proposed budget that funds SROs and relocates that to increase the number of guidance counselors and other support staff to support the school committee's college and career readiness goal in Boston Public Schools. Two, if the removal of SROs is not possible at the time, BPS should change the job description of these officers to focus on implementing transformative justice practices, which do not put students on a school-to-prison pipeline. Third, BPS should continue to work with school partners to create safe community spaces for the healing and holistic well-being of our BPS students. Community orgs provide academic support, mentoring, college access, tutoring, after-school, and summary enrichment. And we request that you continue to work with partners and expand the support staff in these departments. Lastly, we are asking for BPS to form a working group that is made up of students, parents, teachers, and other stakeholders to review current roles and come up with ideas for changing the role of SROs in an effort to ensure a transparent and equitable process for reviewing SROs jobs descriptions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Mike Heishman, Robert Jenkins, and Sharon Hinton. If you can, please raise your hands in Zoom. Mr. Heishman?
Mike Heishman, Dorchester, Beja. E F A, Excellence for All, must become the most important goal of our superintendents, the school committee, and the school department. For the last year, the most important priority of the school department has been the protection of our children, our educational workers, and members of our community from the Corona pandemic. It has been a traumatic year, and our children have suffered terribly. Of course, there has been a significant decline in their educational progress. Remote or hybrid have been inferior settings for our children's education. Hopefully Corona will be under control by the September, and every parent caregiver will believe that it will be safe for their children to return full-time to BPS buildings and receive a high-quality education. Our Black, Brown, Indigenous, and low-income children of all races have suffered from institutionalized child neglect. We need a reparations budget with the funds to begin to repair this historic damage. All of our children, the parents and caregivers in our community, needs an E F A budget and Excellence for All budget. A proposed thirty-six million dollar increase is less than a three percent increase. With increases inflation, the proposal is for a level-funded budget. This is not an E F A reparations budget. Planning a budget that assumes a major decline in enrollment will be a self-fulfilling prophecy, invitation for more parents to either not return to leave the system. Instead, the mayor, superintendent, and school committee must believe that enrollments will increase because there will be major increases in funding along with plans to make major improvements in our educational system. This would motivate more parents, caregivers, to remain or return their children to public schools. To do so, we will need an E F A reparations budget. There should be no plans to close any schools next year. School closings are always disruptive and painful. So close schools next year would add more trauma into our suffering community. All of our children, the parents, caregivers, need a smooth reopening of schools this September. I requested our superintendent come back to the school committee with an E F A reparations budget proposal. I want to thank the school department for a very informative presentation, and I want to thank the chair for putting the school committee members in the back of the bus in terms of their participation so I could testify before I leave for another meeting at seven o'clock to plan a Black History Month event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins. I don't see him in our attendees list. Mr. Jenkins, if you're with us, please raise your hand. So he'll be followed by Sharon Hinton and Suji Scanell. Sharon Hinton?
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hinton, educator, mother, homeowner in Hyde Park, and mother of a proud graduate of Boston Public Schools, now University of Maine graduate, and now an attendee at Northeast University. I want to start in the spirit of Black History Month, a quote from Frederick Douglass. "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." I want to thank Principal Carla Jenkins, the principal of Henry L. Higginson Ellis School. I attended the Henry L. Higginson in the advanced classes of the fourth and fifth grade and then went to Beaver Country Day School, where I graduated in the top five percentile of my class. I'm now a doctor of education graduate at Northeast University. So I feel what she said, and I want to encourage her in what she's doing, working with homeless families and providing the role model as a Black educator, because representation matters. I graduated from that school, from elementary school, and went on to bigger and better things. And one of my Black teachers there, Ms. Gray, who's gone on and she's in heaven, was one of my most influential educators. We talked about the three Rs, return, recover, reimagine. It is my belief in order to reimagine what needs to happen in the Boston School Department, and you guys have been doing a yeoman's work during the pandemic and even before that, and I'm sure you'll continue after that. But I encourage you to have bold leadership. And while money is a concern, we cannot just look at how we're going to reimagine, reimagine things based on money. Because money in terms of building prison cells is based on third-grade reading scores and not just attendance. In the Bible, it says, "My people perish for lack of vision." I encourage you to have the vision, vision to make the bold moves to give the Boston students what they need, just not we can afford. I congratulate the newest member of the Boston School Committee, and I want to inform you guys and let you know that even though I'm not there with you, I'm still there with you. I will continue to be in a leadership role in the educational spaces. And I also encourage you guys to, I understand a pandemic, but let's not have what we need to do just framed by that. Let's continue to do what we need to do and really imagine what it takes to make these schools quality schools because the parents follow the schools and they actually change their zip codes when the education is excellent. And because the funding is based on property values, we need those parents to stay here and keep their money here so that our vision and our reimagination is funded fully. Thank you for listening, and I continue to support all your efforts in bringing quality education.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask our Spanish interpreters to please join us for this next set of speakers. And I'll invite Suji Scanell, Estefany Almanzar, and Glenda Torres. Please raise your hands in Zoom. We'll start with Suji Scanell.
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sujez Canel. Soy representante de padres de la comunidad de San Steven, específicamente coordinadora de zona de la comunidad de Rosin del. Yo abogo porque las escuelas públicas de Boston no pierdan presupuestos. En especial por la escuela de mis hijos, la Herli K Ocho School. Si no que en cambio sean reconsiderados para aumentarlos más. Hemos sabido de que las escuelas van a tener. Oh, pardon. Perdón. Oh, perfecto. Gracias. Abogo en especial por las escuelas de mis hijos, la Hurley K Ocho School. Pienso que los presupuestos, en cambio, deben ser considerados para ser aumentados. Pues si los montos ya asignados son disminuidos, representan gran atraso para la educación. Más aún, tomando en cuenta la época de pandemia que vivimos. Necesitamos más fondo para la inclusión de nuevos programas, extracurriculares y reforzar los existentes. Incluir fondos para proporcionar asistencia emocional propios del momento que vivimos. Sería de vital ayuda para nuestros hijos y todas las familias contar con un trabajador social. Como resultado de la pandemia, la inflación es un punto a considerar a la hora de asignar presupuesto a las escuelas. Necesitamos más profesores, más personal escolar, más equipo, y mejor infraestructura. Así como el gobierno ha asignado paquetes financieros de alivios económicos para la población. Se deberían asignar presupuestos extra a las escuelas a los fines de contribuir a la adaptación e implementación de los nuevos requerimientos protocolares y operacionales necesarios por el COVID-十九. Debemos invertir en la educación, pues como decía Nelson Mandela, la educación es el arma más poderosa que puedes usar para cambiar el mundo. Muchas gracias por todo lo que están haciendo, por nosotros como padres y por la comunidad. Gracias a todos. Buenas noches.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Estefany Almanzar.
Sí. ¿Puedo empezar? Okay. Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Estefany Almanzar. Primeramente, gracias por la oportunidad de poder ser escuchada el día de hoy. Soy madre de un estudiante de la escuela Blaston. Y hoy estoy aquí nuevamente para que escuchen mi inquietud. Es bien conocido por todo que la Blaston tiene aprobado cinco millones de dólares para puertas y paredes y aún no lo han recibido. Y lo más doloroso es que ahora le están quitando un siete por ciento del presupuesto a esta escuela. Con esta actitud que están tomando, ¿dónde quedará la educación, la enseñanza de nuestros hijos? No es justo para ellos que le quiten esta cantidad de dinero donde la escuela ahora más que nunca lo necesita. Quiero llamar la atención a todas las autoridades que están aquí presentes y que por favor sean conscientes y piense dónde quedará el futuro de nuestros hijos. Gracias.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Glenda Torres. She'll be followed by Alfonso Rubio. Is Ms. Torres with us? Alfonso Rubio? Alfonso will be followed by Rosalba Carbucha.
¿Escuchas?
Sí.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Rosalba Carbucha. Yo como madre de un estudiante de las escuelas públicas de Boston, considero que se han presentado precariedades en los centros educativos por motivos de la pandemia. Y considero que es el peor momento para recortar el presupuesto de las escuelas públicas. Nosotros los padres ahora más que nunca necesitamos tener más que nunca el apoyo para que nuestros hijos puedan recibir los servicios adecuados. Necesitamos que nuestros niños obtengan los protocolos adecuados como desinfectante, los seis pies de distancia, buena ventilación, baños adecuados para que nuestros hijos, para que nuestros niños reciban. Y nuestros hijos necesitan recibir apoyo emocional. Por esta razón estoy aquí para pedirles que piensen que nuestros hijos son el futuro del mañana. En estos momentos de pandemia, las necesidades son más urgentes para nuestros hijos. Por favor, no corten el presupuesto, no mutilen los sueños de nuestros niños. Ellos merecen una educación saludable y digna. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Chair, that concludes our speakers' republic comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I want to say thank you to all the speakers that spoke tonight. Your input is critical as we consider the superintendent's budget recommendation for our next fiscal year. And now I would like to open it up to the committee for questions. If you could either raise your hand virtually or in your box. And I'm going to call on Dr. Coleman first because I know he needs to be stepping out. If that's okay with you, Dr. Coleman?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So Mr. Cooter, thank you for once again organizing a spectacular presentation. I thought it was thorough, informative, and I really appreciate giving the case examples of the work in practice and how this change in creating a foundational budget is supporting the needs of some of our schools most at risk. So I want to thank you and the superintendent for that value decision. I have actually two questions that are about enrollment, the enrollment, and then a third just for clarification about the seventh grade. So my first question, as you pointed out, there's a reduction in black in Latin X enrollment in the district. And I don't know, and if you don't have any answers to this question now, or we may not be able to get it. As the wealth gaps in this city become so incredibly intense, my question is what the impact of gentrification in the city has on that data and whether we can, because it can come across as somehow we are no longer attracted to black and Latin X faculty, families. And I'm one of their other alternative explanations such as the gentrification process. So that's question number one. Question number two, as we see the reduction in particularly ELL families joining us over the time recently, I'm wondering what the impact of the United States immigration policies over the past four years may have on that data, again, independent, external to what we may be doing. And my third question, and this may not be yours to necessarily answer. You talk about this drop in enrollment at seventh grade. And you articulated that it happened. And I'm wondering what drives it and because the implication is that more people go into charter schools. And that's a place we had drop. And then the data you shared with us last week about the drop of performance and engagement in the between seventh and eighth grade across the district is one of our problems. So one, what's the role of gentrification on our enrollment patterns? Two, what may be the role of US immigration policy on our enrollment patterns? And third, what are some of the explanations for the drop in enrollment between sixth and seventh grade?
Yeah, I would start by saying, you know, certainly the great questions overall. Happy to talk about all three. We do try and be relatively conservative in our sort of statements on the rash, the reasons or explanations for why we see certain changes. Mostly because the planning and analysis team led by Jamie Raccanelli, who's actually here tonight as well. We're doing a lot of work to gather the data that you would need to be able to answer the questions of why or where students are enrolling. But we're still working on that. We have a partnership with the Boston Planning and Development Authority to really integrate into the mayor's housing plan and understand how new housing expansions can affect enrollment. I think the first thing when it comes to gentrification, it's certainly something that's a question we're trying to answer, but I don't have an answer for you on that. You know, certainly there is a lot of anecdotal evidence we're hearing from the community about the concerns around gentrification, particularly for family housing and the costs. It's easy to, it's an easy rationale to understand that with the increased cost of housing, that it's just not possible for families to be able to afford to live in our city. And I know that's a major focus of the city. I also know that one of the factors also is just aging in place, right? So families who have been here for a long time, who may have had a student who's in high school, graduates from high school, those families are still staying in the city, but those houses no longer have students who are enrolled there. Your question about English learner programs, certainly that's something that we're seeing, just not new students. And so because there were two major sort of external shocks to the system, the first being, of course, the Trump administration and the xenophobic policies that they put in place around immigration. It is certainly, again, we're hearing from the community that that is going to have an effect. It's doubled by the fact that with COVID, we're just not seeing the same mobility. People are not moving both around Massachusetts into Massachusetts. And so our hope is that both with the Biden administration and changes to immigration policy and post-COVID recovery, that those families continue to participate in public schools in Boston. That is such a vibrant and important part of our diversity and our educational experiences. But we are committed to trying getting better answers to those questions. We don't quite have it yet. The last question is a little bit easier for us to answer because we do have data, you know, as the legal authority for schools here in Boston, we can watch where students exit and enter. And so I highlighted the transition in seventh, or sixth to seventh grade in our K to eights. And a big factor there is, of course, the exam schools that start in seventh grade. A quarter of our students are enrolled in exam schools and that just creates that shift. And certainly as we expand more seven to twelve opportunities, we do see families enrolling. When the New Mission High School expanded to seven, twelve, believe three years ago, we saw a number of the K to eights in the area lose enrollment in seventh grade as families wanted to get into a high quality high school. So we're anticipating seeing those seats be popular across the district and why we're trying to be thoughtful about middle school enrollment. The last thing I'll just say in terms of charter schools is we saw a decrease or we see a decrease between fourth and fifth grade in terms of overall enrollment. And that's because a lot of the charter schools are five through eights or five through twelves. That was part of the configuration that they created, sort of a historical artifact around enrollment for them. And so what you saw is families leaving from fourth grade to fifth grade because they had a guaranteed pathway five through twelve at a charter school. And then we saw many of the families come back if they got into a seven to twelve, particularly our exam schools. So it showed that it was, you know, that we can as a district sort of compete in the marketplace. And so one of our theories about K to six is that we will retain more families in that fourth to fifth grade and fifth to sixth grade years. We're seeing some early evidence of that from the pilot certainly in East Boston and some of the K to sixes we expanded. But this is a pro enrollment strategy, if I could steal a term from Dr. Kerselius. What we, what we're making these changes is to respond to what we see from enrollment patterns, see what families want and maintain the families that we already have and strengthen those pathways. So that's, that's something that we're optimistic about. We'll continue to monitor the data and please keep asking us to find the information and get better understanding of our, of our students because as I mentioned at the start, we symbolically started with Marcus, but our budget process is really rooted, starting in understanding our families and our students. If we don't have really good understanding of why and where students are going, we're not going to be better positioned to serve them. So it's a great question. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And one, I hope the optimism that the current administration will be more immigration friendly in an effective way. Have some worries. And two, I want to thank Sosa, Alex's shop for encouraging us to hire more guidance counselors. So I have to go. You all take care and be well.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. If, Ms. Robinson, please go ahead.
Great. Yes, thank you, Mr. Cooter and your team for a very thorough presentation. And I have a lot of questions, but I will keep to the process and only ask three and then hopefully come back around again. I want to follow up a little bit on what we were just speaking about and, but looking at it, not at the middle grades, but looking at it at the beginning. Because my concern is that I hope the district will begin to look at who are the families who are possibly wanting to enroll their younger children in BPS. Because I know I've spoken to several families of three-year-olds who are frustrated with our enrollment system. They would love to, but they live in neighborhoods and do not understand why they cannot enroll their child in their neighborhood school. And look at our website and get very, very flustered and make other decisions. And so I'm wondering what, I mean, as we look at who is living in the city, who has the potential of enrolling no matter at what grade levels? And how are we reaching out to them? And how are they thinking about the way they want to interact with schooling period? And why BPS would be a good choice for them? I mean, I'm interested in seeing the whole idea of schools moving from, you know, moving stronger into K zero through grade six. My other concern is as we have worked to grow our relationships with our community-based providers, I would hate to see happen again to our community partners that happened years ago when BPS decided to go into K one or K two and then really shifted the issue. So I would just say, let's proceed cautiously and really think about what is that citywide strategy that we've been trying to build? Because I really feel that so many of the things that we've heard families talk about tonight is the city, I mean, is the school district acting on behalf of the city to make sure our students have access to everything from the right so, access, not only from students but for families, to social workers, to counselors, et cetera, nursing. So, you know, this is, this, some of these things were not always the purview of the school districts, but have. So I really think even enrollment, as we think about how we are shifting in our community partners, that that would be something that is, that we're looking at. So can you tell me a little bit about what some of your thoughts are as we would move into this, you know, K to six and give up the K to eight, sort of nine to twelve? The other thing, I just wanted to say that I felt that the whole idea that if everybody was going pre-K to six, it would take away some of that sting around some kids going off to an exam school and others being, quotes, left behind, that it would really encourage all of our sixth grades, fourth, fives, and sixes to be excellent for all, to make sure all of our students are being prepared for the best next steps. So that was one of the positives I saw out of that, but would love to hear more.
So I'm just going to step in really quick and then I'll let you, Mr. Cooter, step in. I think you bring up really great questions as we think deliberately about how we would expand K zero and K one seats. As I've been around talking around the city, families are desperate for this. Also, as I talked to the city on some of our coordinated calls, you know, what we've learned in the pandemic is there's not enough childcare seats and not enough really high quality preschool seats either. And so with our schools being at above ninety percent capacity, not having the room for them, you know, this is a strategy in which to, one, grow enrollment, but, two, really address the early foundations that are necessary for preschool education for our children. This especially true than so many children in these past, in the past year, the pandemic just took a year off. And it'll be, they'll be one to two years behind. So really, really important for us to think about these kiddos and preparing for them coming back to school. Mr. Cooter? And I would think, you know, one of the things also is just creating like a children's cabinet and working as partners across, yeah, you've heard me talk about.
Yes, I hope that can happen.
Yes, I'd love to be able, yeah, work with that with the, with the new mayor.
Yeah, I, you know, certainly I would just add, I think, I actually think universal pre-K, UPK is an update on school committee agenda for next week. And I certainly don't want to speak for the hard work of Andreas Ias's team, Jason Sacks team. You know, one of the things that we're looking for is creating opportunity. You know, one of the things that we're looking for is creating opportunities to both create sort of those feeder patterns from community-based programs into our BPS schools to strengthen those programs and create those predictable pathways, right? So I know from my experience registering that there's just every time you register in BPS, there's a lottery, which is an important part of how we sort of promote equal access. But there's a lot of anxiety that comes with that. So families don't want to have to, they want that certainty and be able to have one transition from K to 12. And so I think it's going to be mixed delivery. And I think the other thing is part of the reimagine planning is going to be community-based, is going to be an engagement process. Because we want to listen and engage with partners, we want to listen, engage with schools. And we want to, of course, listen and engage with families and students. They know what they want. We want to listen and respond to them while still maintaining our vision and what we know we need to deliver on in terms of excellent quality. So tho- those are the things that I would just sort of highlight and respond to. But I think you're, you're right that we need to be thinking about the, the early grades and capturing more of our students. That they're part of the BPS family and BPS system very early on.
Yeah. I think, I think we've got to look at, instead of thinking the lottery is going to give you a better access, that at what point will we get to that no matter which school you go to, you've got high quality? Because I said that, then it takes a lot of the anxiety away. But as long as we keep using the terms and, and act that, you know, raise the issue that everything we're offering is not of the best quality, we will continue to fuel that concern within families. So it's, I really feel it's up to the district to change what is going on within its schools so that we are, we are getting the assured, we are, we can assure parents that what they will get, no matter which school they enter, will be the high quality that every child deserves. I have more questions, but my time is up, so I'll wait.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, Mr. James.
Thank you, Chair. I have a lot of notes all over the place, so I need to sort of thing. Dr. Coleman and Ms. Robinson took the words right out of my mouth. Specifically, Dr. Coleman, I, I really want to zero in on that gentrification piece. And I'm just going, you know, starting the front of question, I just want to make a comment about it. You know, gentrification, it's, it's getting more expensive to live in Boston. That's the reality. And, you know, right here in my own home, my, my aunt, who was my, you know, my guardian, she is thinking about, you know, moving outside of Boston because it's, it's getting so expensive to live here. And, you know, there are studies by US news reports that came out as soon as, you know, last year. And, you know, research from critical institutions that point to gentrification being one of the direct, one of the direct causes of a decrease in enrollment within a, within a district. So I think that this is something that the district, I know it's outside of the scope of the school committee, but I think it's something the district should have a very tough conversation about with the city. To, to, so the city can support the district, so we can have increased enrollment. I just really don't see what the, what the district can do to counteract that if we're, if we're not bringing in the city on that conversation, so they can do their part. So that's what I have to say on that matter. In terms of when, when we talk about guidance counselors and social workers, it's not just an important conversation in itself, but it's also a little bit of an emotional one for me. As someone who grew up in a single family, as, as someone who grew up in a household with a single mother and who had to go through the experience and the, the trauma of her death at the age of 12 years old, when I was in BPS. I got little to no support in school. And it's, you know, hearing Mr. Lopez and Principal Jenkins talk about the students they serve at their elementary school and the struggles and the trauma that they experience and they endure. It's very, it, it brings a lot of weight and it should bring a lot of concern. You know, this is something that we've been talking about for so long. And what really led me to, you know, I, I was very distraught to hear that. I always knew that was a reality. But I think that sometimes we can get caught up in so many other conversations that we don't remember that that's a reality. And that was sort of exacerbated by, you know, that, that feeling that I got when I was, was hearing Mr. Lopez speak. That was sort of, that was exacerbated and, and it's kind of turned into frustration when I heard Ari Rodriguez from the New News Academy talk about the fact that 10 guidance counselors were brought in after a traumatic experience happened at her school. So I, I say all of this to, to bring me to the question of, one, you know, it's, it's, I'm not even going to ask if we can, because I know we can. And, and anyone who tells me that we can is making excuses, period. So it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. What are we going to give our students more guidance counselors and more social workers to actually support them through their journey, not just through BPS, but their lives outside of school? And that's a question that I want an honest, straightforward answer to. And if I can't get that now, I would love to get that another time, but I, I, I would like it to be very honest and very straightforward.
Yeah. So you'll see that reflected in this budget. We added, I think it was 47 social workers last year, Nate, and then 90 this year in the budget.
Ninety-five.
Yeah, 95. And then also we are adding, we added family liaisons to support families through navigating some of their concerns and needs. And so, and I think we're adding 80 of those this year and we added, how many last year, Nate? It was close to.
117.5 over two years.
Oh, super superintendent, Mr. Cooter, when we're talking about a school like the Higginson, that is going to be having one full-time social worker next school year. I'm, I'm not, you know, I think it's great that we've added more social workers, district-wide. I'm particularly focused in how many are we having at each particular school? I think that the, with the, with the, and I should have been clear about that. But because my time is up and I, I'd like to discuss this the next round, with a school like the Higginson that Principal Jenkins and Mr. Lopez serves, I find it unquestionably acceptable that with the students that they serve, they have just one social worker. And I'd like to explore getting them another one for next school year. And again, I don't think it's a matter of if we can do it, I think it's just a matter of how, if we're willing to do it.
Mr. Cooter, if you could share what the ratio is, I know, and what we're doing, even if we are giving it, you know, at least a minimum of a point five regardless of size. But then other schools that have a larger population in terms of their ratio, just so that that can be understood. And then we'll get you a list of the numbers that each school is getting in addition to what they have currently already.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm actually going to turn that question over to, to Miriam, I believe. She knows that it was based on the number of low-income students enrolled in each school. So as the number, as enrollment increased for that population, we allocated more. And of course, I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you, Mr. James, again, for the courage in the way in which you asked that question and, and sharing your personal experience. I think you continue to impress me every time we talk. And we will continue to push for the very resources that you're, you're talking for, talking about. You know, one of the things, and we can, we can put this on the topic list for us to talk about how our central office is supporting these resources in schools. But we also are thinking about how to leverage community-based partners to provide mental health supports. Cause we do have resources and often for us, it's about breaking down the barriers and connecting families to resources in, in all of our schools. But thank you for continuing to, to push us and push for these, these critical services.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. James, for, for your sharing, your personal sharing. And I'm going to move, we'll come back to you and Ms. Robinson. I'm going to move to Mr. O'Neal, Vice Chair O'Neal.
Thank you, Chair. I echo the comments, Mr. James, thank you for sharing that with us. I'm sorry for the loss that you suffered at that age and, but the way you related that to our students and the need for additional support was very valuable. Thank you. I want to thank Principal Jenkins for speaking as well. And I have, well, actually all the school leaders and Mr. Lopez, Mr. Mitchell, et cetera, and our student CFO, Mr. McNeil. So having that input was really helpful to us today. And, and in particular, hearing a Principal Jenkins talk about the work she's doing with her homeless population. Superintendent, I'd like to, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but I'd love to hear a bit more about what we're doing holistically across the district to help our student population. That, that work that Ms. Lopez was sharing to us about 30 families that were homeless, but the work that they're doing in, from social workers, having that down to 12 now. I'd love to get a sense of a bit, you know, of what we're doing on a wider scale, because I know that is a passion of yours. And my questions today could be, could be answered now, or they could be answered in the future and they're twofold. One is, Ms. Ruben, thank you for your presentation. And, and in the course of talking about the additional social workers and family liaisons, you mentioned the hub school model. And that is being mentioned more and more. I know it is a line item in the superintendent's budget. I know she's quite passionate on it. I think it may make sense either now or at one of our future hearings coming up. If we talk about that a bit more, because it has caught the attention of people. I've had people in the community ask me, what does that mean? So if we could get a sense of, of what the vision is on hub school. I know also a number of, of city councils have been bringing it up as well. So, and, and maybe we can do this at, you know, when we talk about centrally allocated or one of our school meetings coming up. But love to have a better sense of, of what we're trying to do with hub schools, what it means for people to understand it. Why is it a separate line item? And, and, and how do we get there and, and how, you know, what we're trying to get to and, and the path we get there? So that's number one. And number two, Mr. James and I hosted a, a student-centered conversation the other day that was quite robust. BSEC students, as we know, all know, never hold back. And, and I actually loved it. I had a blast. And we were talking about our goals and guardrails, but in the course of it, there was a lot of feedback as we were talking about the college and career readiness. And the students from Associate Out of the Team had brought it up as well today and perfectly tied it together was about guidance counselors. And now to me, the guy, and, and particularly the seniors talking about, you know, how harder it is to connect through this period of remote. And Superintendent, you on the call, you, you heard the feedback as well. And so again, maybe at our next session, because I, you know, I don't want to put folks on the spot. But if we can think in terms of social workers, family liaison, school psychologists, nurses, guidance counselors, this is kind of a team together that's, that's working with our students around their social, emotional learning and their, and their emotional and their physical health and helping prepare our students. And so if we could spend a little bit more time at the next session, maybe look at the, you know, the pieces of those, but then look at them together and, and where we're going over the past couple of years and how we can, how we can continue to focus in on that, maybe as part of the funds we're going to receive for dealing with the pandemic. You know, this is really getting at the heart of what has been impacting our students working remotely. And so hub school model number one, and then kind of that whole social, emotional team would love more details at an, at an upcoming meeting.
Glad to bring that, Mr. O'Neal. Those are really important connections that you're making. And as you've seen the budgets, the past two budgets that my team and I have presented, it is investments in support for students, direct, direct support to students and through a student support team model. And we'll bring that so that you can see it. We did give schools the option if they wanted an academic counselor or a social worker. Of course, it takes time to build these positions because it's ongoing funding for FTEs for the full-time equivalents. You know, the, when you, ever you add personnel, you know, these are folks coming in at, you know, at teacher, typically teacher pay levels. And so we're talking, you know, a significant expense. And so it does take a while to build up. We started with nurses. We added social workers and family liaisons last year to our 33 transformation schools. We added more this year to every school. And, you know, we can continue to add, it's just going to take continued resources to be able to add that. I, I just want to check in with Mr. Cooter on the counselor positions that we have now in high school and the, the ratios, the national ratios and where we're at with that. We had discussed that prior in terms of the number of counselors that we have. I don't know if Miriam or Mr. Cooter has that number.
Apologies, we do not have a number, but I'd be happy to follow up with a number. And we can, we can include that in the sort of overview of the hub schools, sort of coordination of services at the school level.
Great.
Thank you. And, and my final comment before I run out of time, or actually I already have, so I'll keep it very quick. I appreciate the spirit of starting to think about reimagining. I want to make sure that folks heard you, Mr. Cooter, that this is not in this year's budget. This is thinking about future years. And I'm particularly sensitive to communities that worked hard to have K to eight schools. Oftentimes it happened because parents were uncomfortable with the choices that they had. And, and, and so I, I want it to be a good reason why a school community would choose to go down to a K to six from a K to eight, both to expand the early education seats, as we talked about, but also because they have robust high school options across the city. And so I, I just want to make sure that this, what I heard from you today was this was merely just putting out that the thought process is going on and that this is going to be a community engagement process over the course of some time. This is not something that is being proposed as part of this budget, budget. Because in the past, this body has voted to keep a dual K to six, seven to 12 and K to eight, nine to 12 model. So I ju- I just wanted to make sure that was clear to folks that this was not something, you know, because the way the Boston drumbeats work, we know that this could be potentially misinterpreted. And this is the beginning of a conversation is what I heard from you.
That's absolutely right. And thank you for, for, for reiterating that. You know, I, with all of these reimagine, sort of any proposal, we come together, our commitments to do it with communities, not to communities. And I think what we want to do is, is understand the families that are in K to eights. You know, my, my two children are enrolled in a K to eight and one that, you know, is, is, is part of this conversation and sort of, I would want anyone to come in and sort of mandate one thing or the other. And you're right that there are robust K to eight communities that we want to keep. We've talked about how to design our seven to 12s and the nine through 12 portfolio to make sure that families that want to stay in the K to eights can maintain that same experience. And so, you know, this is what we want to put out there to the community is, is these are things we're thinking about to, to let, to let them raise their hand or to start the, the conversation as a community. You know, a recent example of this is the Perry K to eight in South Boston, which is a small K to eight. One classroom per grade recently voted or was changed to go to a K to six. It wasn't a vote, but. And they phased out their upper grades as a way to strengthen their overall school program. And so that's an example of something we did with the community. Of course, there weren't, you know, a lot of protests around that because it was something that was community-driven. And so that's part of what we want to do as we reimagine what is possible for our schools. Make sure that it's the community voice has a strong part of, of all of that planning.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neal, I also want to just make sure that the community understands the new funding, the, the cares to funding and the reason why we wouldn't hire counselors with that funding is because in two years, we would have to lay them off.
Right.
And so I just want to make sure that, you know, that's why these investments, it would be approximately 60, $61 million a year that we could spend. We want to seed innovation and seed a foundation of work that could potentially be ongoing if it's worthy of new funding ask that we would make of the city for an ongoing. that we would make of the city for an ongoing cost.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just I just wanted to go back and my my hearing things, whatever, I need to get new ones. I can only hear every other word. So I just want to take a moment because I I heard the emotion in your voice, Mr. James, but it just all came together when the Vice Chair said he was sorry for your loss. So I just wanted to say that I'm really, really sorry. I lost my mom when I was thirty-five and it was heartbreaking and just rocked my entire world. I think you could never you're never prepared for such a loss and especially when you're so young. So I just wanted to say I'm really sorry and thank you for sharing that with us. And now I'm gonna move to Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. So one of the questions I have is, you know, where are we in the Build PPS model? With the with the knowledge that the pandemic has brought us about our buildings, which may not have been on the pathway that we were several years ago when we first started Bill BPS. Our knowledge about our buildings, what they can and cannot do for us has been become greater. We have a lot of new issues. So my question is, what's left out of the original ten million dollars? And where are we heading as we continue to look to reopen schools? And my other question, I'll just ask both of them right now. The other question is I I know we are concerned about losing students at this point, but my question is in a year when we know our students are coming back with so many greater needs, can we take advantage of the fact that we may have smaller classrooms, classes and to assign fewer students to teachers so that they can give more children more intentional work and have fewer kids in classrooms so that if the potential of bringing everybody back, the whole class could come back because they could fit. We wouldn't have to have hybrid, but could we think more creatively about the students who will return and the resources that, you know, are, is there a way of using some of the ESSR money to fund for this next year almost in, you know, an IEP for every single kid? Give them more tutoring, smaller classes, things that we hopefully won't need a year from now, but would certainly improve everybody's experience and not see it as something that's less than. But as one of those things that actually, you know, allows us to do more because we have fewer.
Those are all really good, quick suggestions, Ms. Robinson, and the exact reason why we want to engage the community in these kinds of conversations. And really reimagine what we can do for our kids. So thank you for those suggestions. Mr. Cooter, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, so the the eighteen point five million in additional supports that we gave to schools was to maintain capacity, you know, in a typical year where we saw significant enrollment declines like this, we would be doing more to consolidate classes and close programs in response to enrollment. What we did was take a strategy of stability, so making sure that you know, in a lot of ways, our kids have experienced enough instability. And so what we wanted to do is stabilize the programming and teaching staff. We did close some classrooms in some schools where we thought that the enrollment, it was really about the three-year sort of trend rather than it was about the pandemic disrupting it. And so I do think there's an opportunity for us to for us, for the schools to think differently about how to support students and be creative in their groupings at the at the at the classroom level. And then, yeah, I think we have identified some initial dollars set aside for support for students, both general education tutoring supports and academic interventions, but really including the need for special education, student supports and compensatory services, English learner supports and designing programs specifically for them. We are just starting to to sort of put that into the budget. It's it's something that Andreas Ias and her team is thinking deeply about and will come with more plans that that's not sort of the amount that is not going to start, it's not going to stop there. We're really focused on a multi-year effort to invest in students and tailor it to the specific needs of of our students when they return. So I think you're you're right to ask about it. And I do think that there's an opportunity for us to do more of that work and you know, there'll be more plans coming over the next weeks and months on that.
Yes, thank you. I have one more quick question. And this is about the social workers. It's wonderful that we are expanding that number of social workers. It was alarming hearing that they have to pay for their own supervision. So my question is with with three very strong social work schools here in Boston, BCBU and Simmons, and there may be others. Have we come, have we been working with them in partnership either through their schools of social work to either help us with students or to help us with the the overall supervision and support of our of our social workers?
I don't have the answer to that, Ms. Robinson, but I will certainly ask our our lead social worker and speak with with them about the training that they provide and what the cost is and what their professional development is. I know that they have extensive professional development plan for the social workers as they onboard them, especially in CLSP, our culturally linguistic and sustaining practices and anti-racist work. So let me get back with you on what the specific training is that they provide and that they're planning on providing.
Yeah, I didn't know whether there was any kind of particular urban social worker program at the schools of social work that could also become a great funnel for us to get people coming out with the skills that we need because it's always the issue, we're always having to retrain people to meet the needs of our district versus is there a way of getting them, you know, coming out with those skills? But thank you. And and again, I agree with with Mr. James and others having more guidance counselors for students and more social workers, given the special needs that some of our children have, even though I know that there may be a national standard for the social worker per student. With so many students coming with such complicated issues, we may need to lower that number and up the number of social workers so that they don't get burned out from trying to provide so many necessary needs for our families. But thank you for all you're doing to at least getting us up on the right start of getting those services out to families. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. DeRusio.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I'll just add, building on on some of Jerry's comments. At the East Boston Health Center, I just want to suggest that we've seen a great uptick in the utilization of our all of our mental health resources by using telehealth. And especially with schools in East Boston, we have a school-based health center as well. And it's reduced our costs. It is greatly increased utilization. I think it's sometimes hard for kids to show up in person, but if you do something through their phone or you do something initiated through text, you get a lot more use and a lot more compliance. It reduces the stigma and so forth. So I just suggestion on there that you know, the the healthcare system across the city from our community health centers, you know, to our city hospital, Boston Medical Center, have been really revolutionized in terms of lowering costs and increasing support with mental health services. So and also I want to thank Mr. James for raising this really critical and important issue. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. DeRusio. We actually learned that in this pandemic that telehealth is a great way to connect with our students and we have been using it. And it has been a great way for us to provide the services to students when we were when we're fully remote. So thank you for that suggestion and we could certainly bring back some statistics, maybe in my superintendent report next time, the number of telehealth visits that we've had and the amount of services that we've given to students so far.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent, I would just wanted to comment on your last comment. I would love to see that data about how many students in BPS have been utilizing telehealth. I think that's really critical. To Mr. Cooter's point earlier about mental health services. You mentioned that the more low income students a school has, the more social workers that they're given. And I do want to just suggest we don't have to sort of unpack it now. But I do want to suggest that moving forward, maybe adding a homelessness criteria as well also be a factor into whether or not schools get more social workers slash guidance counselors. I I think that, you know, being because there was there was a point in time when I was homeless as well. And I think, you know, sometimes those particular areas, whether it's homelessness or low income, they can overlap, like one can come with the other. So I just think that's really critical.
Mr. James, if I could, I just note that when we, I should have referenced sort of economic disadvantage more globally. We're looking both at students who are in in sort of subsidy programs, so Medicaid who are enrolled. And then we're also looking at homelessness as part of the overall measure of economic disadvantage that's part of this our allocation methodology. And I appreciate you for championing that. And it's something that we continue to look at ways to invest in supporting our students because it is, you know, Principal Jenkins mentioned the the sort of prevalence of of students experiencing homelessness. And I know head of school Andrew Bott has over, I think fifty students who are experiencing homelessness and that critical supports. We have multiple ways to get resources to them. But yeah, I think we can and should always look for ways to do more.
Yeah, I'll I will. I look forward to connecting with you offline to to discuss that further. And, you know, I just to sort of put a cap, well, not put a cap, but you know, to to just end my comments on the matter of mental health for today. It needs to be treated like an emergency, period. It needs to be treated like an emergency because it is an emergency. Not only do we have, you know, students who are, you know, low income and homeless and going through DCF whose families have been ravaged by the pandemic. These all take a toll on their mental health. And on top of that, they have to go to school. I think sometimes adults forget that, you know, we have all these things that our students are going through and then they have to go to school, something that is supposed to be a structure in their lives that in a lot of ways is also stressing them out, especially during this time. So I just I do think that mental health needs to be the utmost priority. I know, I already know that the district has been, you know, sending out flyers and promoting mental health sort of hotlines and all that good stuff. I think we can be doing way more as Mr. Cooter mentioned. Much, much more and in implementing much more effective tactics at that. So that's on the matter of mental health. And then, you know, my my second question about the budget specifically, and, you know, I look forward to digging into this over the next several weeks when we meet about the budget. But I I'd like to just propose a I'm I'm I don't know what what answer I would get actually, but it's about external money that schools raise. And you already know, Mr. Cooter, it's external money that schools raise, it not being factored into the budget. That is extremely alarming. I'm going to say that one more time. That's extremely alarming to me. That is extremely alarming to me. BLS, I believe, is in, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cooter, is getting thirty-two million dollars this upcoming school year. BLS and BLA are amongst the highest funded schools in the district. Yet they are at the bottom of the list when it comes to tuition per pupil, how much they're spending per student. And not to mention, these are schools historically who have students come back and donate to the school. And, you know, and then they apply for grants, they have donations. So all, you know, they're they're getting money on the side that we're not seeing. And my issue with that is that we could be, we need to order, we need to put in to place some types of checks and balances. I don't know if that happens on the school committee level or the city council level, but that's extremely disturbing to me. For a school like BLS who's getting, I believe, thirty-two, thirty-three million dollars this upcoming school year. And I know that's based off of, you know, enrollment and waiting, but then to have them have, we don't even know how much money from their donations and the grants that they apply for outside of the district that doesn't show up in the budget. We should be taking away a little bit of their money, quite frankly, to be blunt, and giving and distributing it to schools that have students that fall into the waiting categories that your team outlined. That that needs to happen. I know we spoke about, you know, other school districts sort of having a tax on you know, individual fundings and donations that the schools get themselves, but that's something that BPS needs to explore. I, you know, for next year's budget or just ASAP, it's something that needs to happen because the fact that that money doesn't appear anywhere in this budget or isn't factored into the calculations is mind blowing. And quite frankly, it just explains the inequities and it exacerbates the inequities that we're seeing.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. James. And if I could, I'm going to take a moment just to sort of explain a couple of the different things that you you mentioned because you're touching upon a number of of really important details and one in a commitment to transparency. We want to be very clear on what is included in the budget documents and what is not. And so the first thing that Mr. James is highlighting is that many of our schools have associated nonprofits who are doing fundraising on their behalf. These could be in the form of friends of organizations or maybe using the Boston Education Development, a five oh one C three that's associated with BPS. We do not, as part of this budget process, report on those organizations. That is not part of the budget. So in the budget documents that's online, all of our budget, our budget is presented in in three different snapshots. The general funds, which are the funds from the city primarily through taxes and includes any state funding. We also include the tables that show external funds. And when we refer to external funds in that category, what we are primarily talking about is grants, so state, federal, and then competitive grants that are all approved and voted on by this school committee every week. Most of the money that you're talking about is is not transparent in this process. And I think that is something that we we have explored in terms of the purview of the school committee and in terms of sort of reports to to us as an organization. And so this is another potential you know, equity issue that other districts have taken on and we have talked about internally. And so I you know, don't have have much to sort of comment on it now, but it's worth highlighting and important just to be very clear about what it includes.
No, definitely. I I just do, you know, I know my time is up. I appreciate that. I do want to say though that, you know, I I believe and I I could be wrong. I wish, I wish I knew how much money they had outside of the outside of the budget because I feel like it would just really highlight what I'm what I'm really trying to get to. But we we all have a sense of how much money they have outside of the budget that's outlined in this packet. We we all have a sense. And I I just think that, you know, yes, we've been talking about it internally. It's time we do something. It it's time we do something. I I would love to meet with the chair, the vice chair, someone. Before I leave this district, I would love to speak to someone about how exactly checks and balances on that occurs. Does that occur in the school committee setting? Does that occur on the city level? But there needs to be checks and balances because that in itself is a very, very large inequity. That is very bothersome to me and many others, and I will leave it at that.
I I would like to echo your desire to have greater equity around fundraising. This is one thing I noticed when I came in as superintendent and I started talking with Chief Roberts about this. I wonder if she might want to just speak really quickly about our efforts with that with BEDF and fundraising.
Good evening. I would say there are two things that we are doing in this process. One, we are working with BEBF to really transition to them being our fundraising entity and think about how we streamline in a way that is aligned to our strategic plan, our strategic goals that work over to BEBF. And and so doing also putting in parameters in place to make sure there's transparency around the funding that's being raised on behalf of the district and school. Schools. The second thing that we are also have already started doing through our partnerships and development team is we are starting to try to assess the quality of our current policies inside and how they may be perpetuating inequities in terms of our resource development. Trying to understand where funds are going and coming from in terms of which schools and offices. So asking BEDF to share information and trying to collect that from elsewhere. Then also thinking about then what does that mean? Then also thinking about, then what does that mean for any formal agreements that the district will need to have, both with school-based fundraising partners, so their own five oh one C threes, as well as BEDF. So all of that is underway. Our goal is to, our hope is to have that done by the end of this year, but we do have some ways to go. And then, again, part of that will be then looking later at how that then impacts the the budget process. We're just trying to get the handle on the first part.
Thank you for that, Ms. Roberts, and I'll just quickly end by saying that if that's a conversation that I and other students can be involved in on, sort of like how to formulate that policy or that formal agreement, that'd be very much appreciated.
Well, do.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Tran.
Hi. While I appreciate all the comments and questions from my colleagues regarding the the budget, I have reviewed the budget pretty thoroughly for the last few days. This is what I'm going to say. I'm really impressed, and I real, I'm really appreciative of the work of Mr. Cooter, Superintendent Casillas, and her staff and Mr. Cooter's staff in putting together a very thorough and innovative budget. I particularly like the two sections that you put forward, the recovery and the re-margining in response to the COVID. We talk about equity. In my view, I have, in my experience as managers and department heads for the last thirty years or so, I've handled a lot of budgets. I wish I know you guys back there, because this showed me how transparent and equitable, in my view, in my own definition, that you guys put forward and and with care into the budget. So congratulations, and I'm 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 waiting for the day that we're going to vote on it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Are there any further questions from school committee members? Okay, great. I have, I just have a couple, and then we will wrap up. I also just want to thank the team. I I agree, it's a lot of work to put this together. And I know it doesn't just start, you know, a month before, you know, it's many, many months. And I think just trying to lay out how the process works, what the thinking is, and bringing in the school leaders and the social workers, I thought that was great also. So thank you for doing that. I thank all of them, and also, that was pretty awesome to see a youth CFO. I thought that was awesome. So I'm glad to see that that's exactly what we need to be seeing across, like, all departments, et cetera. So that was really great to see. My questions were definitely stolen by Ms. Robinson and and Mr. and Dr. Coleman. I would say that gentrification, you know, I I don't really need like data and reports because I know what's happening. I I work with families all the time. And I know that Massachusetts is the number one state for Latino income inequality, and that's a big deal. And so I think that Dr. Casillas is right on. I think in the previous two superintendents, we had a conversation where I I thought we should also have a children's cabinet and that we should be working with the city around just designing, you know, what does housing plan look like to keep our families? We need, we need to be able to to do that, or we're going to lose all kinds of diversity. You know, not just like racial and ethnic, but all kinds of diversity. I think a lot of people want to live in Boston because it because has has some diversity. It could definitely be better. But we're going to lose, you know, a little bit of diversity that we have, so I I I'm very concerned about that. And then I just want to say to Ms. Robinson's point that I I totally agree in terms of, I I know we've had a lot of conversations in years past, and it's very emotional to think about the strategy of having neighborhood schools. I know that's very emotional. However, I think that we're just picking up students to take them from here to there. You know, I know that many people would send their children to their neighborhood schools if it was a great school, if it had adequate, you know, resources, if we were strategic in the staff that went there, you know, if it wasn't just, you know, if it was outstanding staff that was put there, and if we had excellent resources, you know, we would save on transportation, great, but not the bigger deal. The bigger deal is we would create a community around that school. You know, we would have like our stakeholders, et cetera, that would like wrap their arms around that. And I agree with Mr. James completely around the external funding. I think that's a big issue. And I do want to see the numbers on that. I've said that for many years, that I I'm not, I don't think that, you know, I want to take away money from schools. That's not what I'm saying. However, if you're fundraising, there should be some equity, you know, because not every school can fundraise the way some of the some, you know, some of the schools can. And so just for if we're really looking at equity, and if we're really talking about being an anti-racist school district, then I do think that's something we need to take up. And I wonder about the the social workers. I agree with Ms. Robinson on the schools. I know this is a crazy idea, but I'll just throw it out there anyway, is, you know, like last night, Mr. Cooter and I were on a call because our kids go to the same school. And so many parents that were are like, what, what, how can I help? What can I do? We have some like great parents. We have parents who are, you know, social workers. And could we have people that volunteer? It doesn't just have to be those schools. Could we, also, I think we have a lot of external partners, and how can we get external partners to get their staff to go for free in all these higher education institutions that could supervise people, you know, in their own organization and a BPS? I just think like being creative, because it seems crazy to me to have to pay out of pocket. You know, I I don't understand, maybe I just don't know enough. And then the last thing that I'll say is that I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of of talking about the future. So, you know, I, because I manage a budget too, even though I I, you know, I'm working on the budget now, and I know that I have to get approved by my board, I'm always thinking about next year and the year after. And like, what are the impacts and what do I have to plan for? So I really appreciate that we're talking about that, and I know that they are going to be tough conversations, emotional conversations, but we have to have them. I don't think that we can get around it if we want to have, you know, really amazing schools. I I just think we have to have them. And so I just want to, again, thank you for tonight, for the presentation, and for all your staff, again, who I know have worked really, really hard. And so with that said, since there are no more questions, I just want to thank everybody, thank the members, and thank everyone who testified tonight. And I want to remind everyone that all the budget documents are available online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. And you can email your comments to budget@bostonpublicschools.org as well as to the school committee. The next remote budget hearing will take place on Tuesday, March ninth at five PM, at which time the committee will receive a budget presentation focused on the central budget. Our final remote budget hearing will take place on Wednesday, March seventeenth at five PM, prior to the regular school committee meeting. And the next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, February twenty fourth at five PM. And if there is nothing further, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Is there any discussion or objection to this motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the role?
Dr. Coleman? Mr. DeRouge?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
I think it's gone.
Okay. Ms. Oliver Dowla?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. See you soon. Take care.